Good afternoon and welcome to the February 24th, 2021 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence a call of our calendar of copy can be a copy which can be found on the meeting web page of the Board of Zoning Appeals, found on the town of Brookhaven website. As noticed, this is a virtual hearing conducted on the Zoom platform. Applicants and other interested parties may participate by utilizing the interactive Zoom hearing link, found on the meeting webpage or by utilizing the link www.brokehaven.gov/join. When attending, please be sure to identify yourself by name and case number, so that we may be able to determine which application you wish to speak on. The Q and A and chat functions found on the Zoom platform can be utilized should you have any questions, and those questions will be answered by our staff. Again, thank you for attending this virtual hearing. Applications before the board will consist of three parts, the presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant, limited to those issues brought on by person speaking in opposition. At the conclusion of each of the presentations, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the application today by a motion to deny or to grant the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place the matter on our decision calendar. Finally, we could hold the public hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear at the end of your cases, a motion to grant the application, what this means is simply that the relief that you seek before the board or some portion of it has been granted, a grant letter will issue from the Board of Appeals Office within seven to 10 business days. That document is a document that you return to the building department with to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your cases, a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on decision calendar, what this means is that your hearing was held today and the record is now closed. Under the code, the board has 62 days to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, again, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a copy of the decision can access it off of the town's website under the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals, once that decision has been filed with the town clerk. Finally, if the motion that you hear at the end of your cases, a motion to hold the public hearing open to a future date, this occurs when either you've not met conditions precedent as an applicant for the relief being requested, or maybe more commonly where the board requires additional information before we can decide your application. In this instance, the public hearing record is held open to a future date. On that future date, the required information is made part of the record and then the matter closed for decision. I want to acknowledge receipt of the notice documents for each of the applications pending today, which have been made part of the record and/or files. In the course of your presentation as an applicant, please provide the board with any testimony or exhibits you wish to be made part of the record for the board's consideration. Any exhibits previously provided have been made part of the record and possibly will be able, will be able to display them during the hearing. If you are not the applicant here today, but someone wishing to speak on an application, we will promote you as a participant at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation. Opposition testimony before the board will have the same opportunity to provide with the board with testimony and exhibits for the board's consideration. We ask only whether it's more than one neighbor or person speaking on an application that you do not repeat with someone before you were said, just please indicate to us that you agree with that with a prior point or prior testimony, and then move on to issues now you're covered by other speakers. This is a three interval calendar before the board today, we will be here for for, for a good number of hours, anything that can be done to to move the hearing along as quickly as we can, can ensure that everyone wishing to speak will have that opportunity. I want to thank you for your attention, please ask you to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you and welcome again to the February 24th, 2021 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals, may we have real call.
Board members, James Mazzarella.
Present.
Charles Lazaru.
Present.
Rick Cunha.
Present.
Ronald Lindsay.
Present.
Howard Bergson.
Present.
Deputy Chair James Wisdom.
Present.
Chairman Paul DeChance.
Present. Are there any postponements from the 2:00 PM interval?
Yes, case number 24 in the name of Sean Catturley requesting March 10.
I have that as, I have that on four o'clock.
You do? Okay, then we have nothing at two.
All right, with that being said, then we can commence this hearing with cases one through three.
Okay. Joseph G. Manzi, Jr., nine Rock Hall Lane, Rocky Point, located on the east side of Lower Rocky Point Landing Road, 465 feet south of Walnut Road, Rocky Point. Applicant requests division of a parcel into three plots, one, two, and three, requiring lot frontage and minimum side yard variances for the existing one family dwelling on Lot One. Lot frontage for a proposed one family dwelling on Lot Two, and lot frontage variance for a proposed one family dwelling on Lot Three.
Mr. Chair, I have Mr. Stephen LoSquadro for the applicant, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir, can we have your appearance for the record, please?
Yes, sir, Stephen LoSquadro, 649 Route 25A, Rocky Point, New York, on behalf of the applicant, Joseph Manzi, Jr.
Thank you, sorry for the delay in commencing the hearing. Mr. LoSquadro, I believe that our planner reviewed this application and he is here will have him sworn and provide his testimony to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John. Just unmute yourself, please.
Yes, I'm the square tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. And the property is located on the east side of Lower Rocky Point Road, 465 feet south of Walnut Road in the Hamlet of Rocky Point. The applicant is proposing to divide the 69,438 square foot parcel into three lots, ranging from 22,625 square feet to 23,462 square feet. Properties improve with a one-story dwelling, which is to remain on the land division plan as Lot One, and two new single-family dwellings are proposed designated as Lots Two and Three. Access intended via Lower Rocky Point Road. Properties located in the B1 Residence District requiring a minimum lot size of 22,500 square feet, and the proposal conforms to said requirements. However, it is noted that Section 85914E of Town Code states that the calculation for area for interior lots known as flag lots with road frontage of 20 feet or less shall exclude the area encompassed by or attributed to portion of said lot, which is 20 feet or less in width. While there was adequate lot area at 69,438 square feet for three lots, meeting the requisite 22,500 square foot lot area requirement, with Lot Three proposed with 10 feet of frontage and at 23,462 square feet, this lot would be slightly substandard pursuant to Section 85914 of Town Code at approximately 21,392 square feet. There are a total of 60 improved residential lots within the 500-foot radius and none have lot frontage conformance with the application. Acknowledging saying, acknowledging no conformance for frontage, staff notes there is one flag lot in Locaw approved by zoning board action, which is adjacent to the subject parcel. Lots One and Four on the radius map were approved by the board in 2008 stemming from an action known as Jenk, case number nine and 10 of September 17, 2008. Acknowledging saying there are inherent differences with the subject application with the previous zoning board action. The first is that the Jenk flag lot enjoys 25 feet of frontage, with the subject proposal having 10 feet. And further testimony from that public hearing revealed that there were certain concerns about creating a flag lot in Locaw. As such, the applicant provided a yield plan to the board as part of the record wherein two conforming lots meeting all bulk requirement of the B1 Residence District was provided via a yield plan with a 50-foot town road with cul-de-sac. Further, the parcel enjoyed the Benjamin Smith House circa 1873, and developing the parcel with two lots with a yield plan would have resulted in the potential elimination of the historic home. As such, instead of the yield plan, relief was granted for the creation of the flag lot. With the subject parcel at 69,438 square feet, yield for three lots is not feasible due to the area which would be required for the town roadway. It is also noted that lots Nine and Twelve on the radius map may be susceptible to similar relief. Although they are currently set up in a flag lot configuration, assessment records reveal the lots are in common ownership and as such would likely require zoning board approval as well. As per secret, the application is an unlisted action with a negative declaration recommended.
Thank you for the record, then those are the comments of the board's planner, Christopher Reed. Mr. LoSquadro, how did you wish to present this?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for having me, thank you to the board members as well. Very simply, Mr. Chairman, well, first of all, of course, let me, let me say that I believe that with respect to the layout and what's, what's in the surrounding area, I believe Mr. Reed has very accurately set forth the recitation of the facts. We would notice follows, that with respect to the three lots, of course, one is an existing home, and with respect to the very minor variances requested with respect to lot frontage, you're only essentially talking about a question of feet, one and a half feet in one instance and approximately 12 feet in another. And the overall side yards are met in each instance, but in one particular instance, one of the side yards requires just a few feet relaxation as well. So what we do submit most respectfully, Mr. Chairman, is that the overall application does conform very well and very substantially to the nature and character of what one finds in the very immediate area and in the surrounding Rocky Point area. And of course, lot area and area requirements are met in their entirety. With respect to the flag lot issue, the issue that was just brought up on February 22nd by way of the memo that we were made aware of, I believe, Mr. Chairman, and would respectfully request that we be permitted to adapt as follows, and that is, had we been made, had that been made note to us, which it wasn't previously as part of the denials and paperwork that went back and forth, we would have adapted the maps that were submitted and we would request the opportunity to do that because by meeting then the 20%, which we know that we can do, and would submit maps accordingly within the next few days or certainly within a week, then that would meet all area requirements, and then that would further demonstrate complete conformance to what is seen in the surrounding area, and it would, of course, conform even more so to the nature and character of what is presented in the surrounding neighbors. I would also note as well that there is substantial support in the neighborhood, in the area, if you will, for this application, which I think speaks well to how much it does conform. And in fact, those who would be most immediately impacted, neighbors who are immediately adjacent, have expressed support, I believe, or it's been relayed to me in writing to the board. So, Mr. Chairman, I would request that the board act favorably, and I would request that the hearing be concluded as far as presentation today by us, but then held open for submission of the revised map, which then would address the flag lot issue as has been presented today by Mr. Reed, thank you.
Thank you, and I will confirm that the board is in receipt of four separate letters from neighboring property owners in support of the application. Ms. Ricordi, I think I can just read the authors of those and we've made them part of the record.
Yes, I have a letter from Carol Bleka, 15 Whitewood Drive, Rocky Point, I have a Peta Archibacio, Rocky Point, Dominic Lacerdo, 135 Lower Rocky Point Road, and Joseph Marchesi, 122 Lower Rocky Point Road.
And do I understand then, Mr. LoSquadro, is that you're asking for time to submit a revised survey depicting the three lot land division, but with Lot Three having a the flagpole width of 20 feet as opposed to the 10 feet that was originally submitted?
Yes, sir.
All right, that being said, let me ask the board, are there any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of quick clarifications here.
Yes, sir.
Steve, doesn't the 20-foot driveway create a side yard issue with respect to the, the, I don't know, what lot that is, the house next to it?
My, yes, Mr. Bergson.
Are you going to reduce the size of the house? To accommodate that?
I'm not sure, Mr. Bergson, that the size of the house would be, would be reduced, but what I do know is this, and maybe this would be, I guess, subject to what we're going to submit, and that is the revised survey as prepared by the surveyor. My understanding is, after having the, the 20-foot issue with, with the, with the flag lot brought to our attention on February 22nd, just the other day, and then speaking with the surveyor that we're able then to reconfigure the survey and would be, be able to meet requirements of Town Code, and there wouldn't be more, if you will, variances or relaxation sought besides what we've already requested for, which is minimal. So, I don't know, Mr. Bergson, if that answers your question, I believe it does because I'm not sure it would raise further issues.
Well, that's my concern, that you're going to be raising further issues. Additionally, the, the other issue I think would be, you'd be decreasing, increasing the request for variance for the front yard for that lot, the, I don't know which, for Lot Two, I think. Unless I'm misunderstanding it. I mean, you've asked for a front yard variance and it's minor, and even with the additional 10 feet, but I'm just concerned that it's going to create something that wasn't part of the original denial.
You know, as I look at this, Mr. Bergson, I, I'm seeing that the width of the flag lot can be increased to 20 feet. The house size, and Mr. LoSquadro makes a point, if the, if the envelope was reoriented.
Okay.
Would set back, or the size of the house could be reduced, but it doesn't appear, by my looking at it, that any further relief will be needed, meaning Lot Two will meet the area and, and Lot Three would not need a lot area variance.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman, I just, my concern is that something was going to happen here and we'd be bouncing it around.
No, and Mr. Bergson, thank you, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, so we're being extra cautious. My understanding was, Mr. Bergson, is that with the applicant having consulted with the surveyor, that that was able to be accommodated accordingly.
Okay.
All right, okay, was there anything further, Mr. Bergson?
No.
Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a speaker on the case.
Mr. Vega, you can promote that speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, I have Deborah Caratento.
Thank you. Hi, are you able to hear us?
I can hear you.
Very good. Oh, no, we can't, I only see your first name, it's Deborah, but I'm going to ask you, please, to give your attention, please, to the board's attorney, John Doyle, and he will swear you in.
He's ready and, yes, I'm the square tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good, could you start with, with your name and address, please?
My name is Deborah Caratento, and I live at Seven Meadow Lane, Rocky Point, New York.
Thank you, could you spell your last name? Well, thank you for attending this virtual hearing with us today, we appreciate your spending the time to do that, what additional comment did you have on this application?
Well, most of, I don't want to waste your time, I totally agree with Mr. LoSquadro, and I've been a member of the community for over 30 years, and my daughter actually has the adjacent property, and we just thought it would be great for the community to have more families and to build on those lots, that's really all I have to say.
We appreciate you, those comments, is there any question or comment back from the board?
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming out.
Okay, bye-bye.
All right, then, Mr. LoSquadro, were there any final comments for us?
No, sir, I do rest on what was submitted, and I also do appreciate the opportunity to submit the revised survey, which then will address the remaining issue that is before you.
Thank you, I would like to give, to send us to March 24th. That will give you two weeks to get the survey and maybe give our planner another week for final comment or mitigation measures on the final, on the final amended survey being submitted or revised survey being submitted, does that sound acceptable?
Yes, sir, thank you, and I guess I should note, Mr. Chairman, as well, that otherwise the mitigation measures that were contained on the last page, the third page of Mr. Reed's memo, are acceptable to the applicant, just so you have that for the record, so we don't have to revisit that in the future.
All right, thank you. We are not closing, we're going to hold open so that you can attend the next hearing or not, Mr. In thinking about what Mr. Bergson mentioned before, what you, what you may end up with is slightly less frontage for Lot Two, which may cause you to amend the relief requested from 112 feet to 102 or, or something of that nature, you'll have your surveyor take a look at it, but the relief, at least for frontage for Lot Two, was, was noticed, and if the revised survey calls for that, that amendment, then you can consider that at the time that we are looking at it, okay? If there's, if there's nothing further, I'll ask the board for a motion to hold over until March 24th.
I moved, I'm sorry.
By Mr. Bergson, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Bye-bye.
Case number six, Senmar Associates, 1455 Veterans Memorial Highway. Ilandia, properties located on the southwest corner of Montauk Highway and Old Neck Road, Senam Riches. Applicant requests height variance for proposed 22-foot-high, 176-square-foot wall sign.
Mr. Chair, I have Anthony Guardino for the applicant.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Guardino, we can, I'm going to ask you, please, give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Yes, I'm the square tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Excellent. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
Yes, it's Anthony Guardino, law firm, Farrell Fritz, PC, Hopout, New York, representing the applicant, Lidl US LLC.
Good to see that you're well, Mr. Guardino.
Same here, nice to see you all.
We will start with the testimony of the board's planner.
Properties situated at the southwest corner of Old Neck Road and Montauk Highway in the Hamlet of Senam Riches. The applicant seeks relief for wall signage in conjunction with a proposed Lydell food market at the Seven Acre Commercial Shopping Center. And the applicant seeks relief for a wall sign to advertise a Lydell insignia and food market, which is taking over the tenant space of the former Senam Riches Marketplace and wall bombs. And the marketplace enjoyed a 152 and a half square foot sign with the wall bombs signage having 82 square feet. It is also noted that the tenant space was also proposed to be utilized for a best market. In conjunction with that tenant, the Board of Appeals heard an application for a proposed 222-square-foot, 20 and a half-foot-high sign, wherein the board granted the application with the wall sign not to exceed 160 and a half square feet, and a prohibition on backlighting, send more, case number one of April 18, 28, 2018. And as such, the proposal is in substantial conformance with the previous endeavor for signage here, which is 15 and a half square feet larger and one and a half foot higher. Parcel is also within the Senam Riches Historic District and thus was reviewed by the Historic District Advisory Committee. HDAC recommended an approval of the sign package, but the application being a type-two action.
All right, then, for the record, that is a testimony of the board's planner, Mr. Guardino, what presentation did you have?
Yes, so thank you, again, I represent Lidl US. We are seeking the two signs, two variances, I should say, relating to a single wall sign. The wall sign will be externally illuminated, and that is at the store in Senam Riches. This is a site I was before this board, I think just about two years ago, for the best market, and I made that application for the best market sign, and I guess it didn't, best market didn't last that long there, before Lidl purchased the assets and now has converted the store to a Lidl. So, Lidl leases what was the best market tenant space at the shopping center. We are proposing a sign that is 176 square feet, it will be 22 feet at its tallest portion on the wall. The parcel is located in the town's J2 district, and as Mr. Reed mentioned, the site is also partially located in the town's historic district transitional area, which, as you know, extends about 500 feet beyond the historic, designated historic district. The Senam Riches Lidl was one of the first, and maybe, maybe even the first Suffolk County store in the chain to open about a year, a little more than a year ago. And in order to open, the store wanted to have a sign on the building, so it installed at the time a fully compliant wall sign with the intention of applying to the Historic District Advisory Committee and seeking variance relief from this board in order to install a more appropriately sized sign. The applicant presented his proposal for the sign to the HDAC as the code requires, and the proposal was originally for an internally illuminated sign. Back in May of 2020, the HDAC commented that the existing sign, the compliant sign was too small for the space and recommended a larger sign that is externally illuminated with the goose neck lighting, similar to what this board required for the best market two years ago. Lidl made the change, and then following the HDAC hearing that was held on October of 2020, the HDAC recommended approval of the proposed wall sign with a slight modification to its positioning, so it didn't have any issue with the size or the height of the sign. It actually wanted it to be more centered in the peak, the triangle sign band. And that was, that was accommodated, and then the board issued a decision on October 16th of 2020, which recommended approval. The HDAC, again, did not have any objection to the size and the height of the wall sign. As Mr. Reed mentioned in his staff memo, Lidl sign proposal here is in substantial conformance with the previous endeavor for signs. At this location, it is only 15 and a half square feet larger than the, what was previously approved and only one and a half feet higher than the former best market sign. And I'm closed by, you know, just making the point that Lidl has invested a lot of money in the renovation and conversion of this supermarket. It obviously wants to succeed in this market, it wants to succeed in this particular space, and it feels that an appropriately sized sign is critical to that success, and it's, you know, that, that the reason for that is particularly true here because cars are traveling at a fairly high rate of speed along Montauk Highway, and the building is set back a fairly significant distance from the road. I am not going to get into the criteria for variances, I would just say that granting of the signed variances here will have a significant benefit to the applicant, which is namely the success of the store without any corresponding detriment to the community. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Guardino, I just, I will state for the record that we do have communication from HDAC wherein they take no position on the application to this board, and I just want to, before I give it out to the board for questions, I want to confirm that the, what we're looking at right now is what was, what the HDAC was looking at and not what they looked at initially, meaning I see the Lydell insignia there, but it doesn't appear to be centered, so was that what they originally looked like, or had it previously been even further off of the center?
No, it was further off. I think this is exactly what we, this is the revised package
Okay.
that went into HDAC. Before the food market lettering was, and the, and the Lidl, and then, for lack of a better word, was further off to the left. And quite frankly, it was, it was an appropriate comment because it looks much better now.
Okay.
It was a little bit off. So we, whatever HDAC was asking for, if this turns out not to be it, we will make sure that we comply.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Charles Lazaro.
Mr. Lazaro, yes.
The current sign right now is much, a little smaller by appearance and is lit by two goosenecks. And you say the, the HDAC was influential in, kind of like, conceptually fulfilling that pendant of triangular by suggesting the placement of the Lydell sign off-center with the food market to be to the right. The Lydell sign that is illustrated in what I'm looking at, the concept drawing, is going to be also lit by goosenecks, did you say?
Yes, yes. Yeah, no internal illumination at all.
None whatsoever. So you're going to repeat the two goosenecks or would you require three?
I don't know exactly. Whatever is appropriate. I don't have the...
Well, I, I just...
Three goosenecks.
I would say it probably, hold on just a second. Anthony, make it smaller. Now move it to the right. Yeah, there are three goosenecks in, in shadow, illustrated on the drawing. And I'm not sure, but they look like one is higher for the sign and two are a little bit lower for the food market. Okay. And agreed with Mr. Reed with respects to being mostly or substantially in conformance with the dimensions, the heights and the square foot area. I have one question. I noticed presently on the site, there is a large mobile trailer sign. Will that eventually be removed?
Is it? And I'm not familiar with it. Is it a Lidl sign?
It is.
It is. Yes, I'm sure that will be removed.
Okay.
Yes.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaro. Was there anything further from the board? Do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any speakers at this moment.
Thank you. Mr. Guardino, the, it appears from the board's review of these two applications, and we haven't reached the second one yet, that there are trailers with freestanding signs on them, on them in the parking lot, excuse me. I'm wondering, in addition to the wall sign, does, does Lydell intend to pursue some sort of freestanding stanchion sign? Is that why the, we're seeing these, these separate signs on, in the parking lots?
No. My understanding is that Lidl will be placing a sign, if it's not already there, on the monument sign that we had approved back two years ago. Because there's space on that sign. So that's where we're going. Frankly, I apologize. I just did not know that there were mobile signs on the site.
I mean, the existence of the trailer may in of itself not be a violation, but certainly the sign attached to it is. And I think that you'll see that as a condition, the removal is a condition to the board's action here.
That's fine. That's absolutely fine. I can tell you, well, we're getting ahead, but on the Selden one, you know, the grand opening, I just found out, actually is today. So that's probably why that vehicle is there. But I don't think Lidl will have any issue with the condition that may be removed.
All right. If there's nothing else from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Just one last question.
Yes, sir.
There was a mention of the ground sign, the monument sign out in front. There is one here on this site, and it already has Lidl advertised on that ground, ground sign.
Yes.
Okay. That, that being said, I recommend grant the application with the proviso that the temporary mobile Lidl sign be removed from the site.
Second.
And then as a type-two action, motion is by Mr. Lazaro, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number seven, Selden Plaza LLC, care of Miller Realty Associates, 213 Glenn Street, Glen Cove. Properties located on the northwest corner of Middle Country Road and County Road 83, Selden. Applicant requests height variance for proposed 27-foot, 6-inch-high, 193-square-foot wall sign.
All right then, Mr. Guardino, you are still with us, I see. If you could just give us your appearance for this application.
Yes. Again, Anthony Guardino, partner with the law firm of Farrell Fritz, Hop Dog, New York, representing the applicant, Lydell U.S.
Thank you. And again, we'll start with Mr. Reed's testimony.
The applicant seeks area and height variances for proposed signage to advertise Lidl Food Market. And the property is located on the northwest corner of Middle Country Road and County Route 83 in the Hamlet of Selden and home to Selden Plaza, which encompasses approximately 26 acres with 252,000 square feet of tenant's space. The applicant seeks relief for a wall sign to advertise a Lidl insignia and food market, which is taking over the tenant's space of the former Wall Bombs and Best Market. Staff was unable to ascertain, ascertain the size of the best market sign, but Wall Bombs enjoyed a 186-square-foot sign stemming from a zoning board action in 1993, as well as other small signs advertising amenities with the grocer. It is noted that the facade is 192 feet in length for the new tenant, and the building is approximately 500 feet from Middle Country Road. As such, it is the opinion of staff that these characteristics may find the relief to be appropriate, with the action being a type-two action.
All right then, those are the comments of the board's planner. Mr. Guardino, what did you have to add for this application?
Yes, so again, seeking the two variances here, a single sign. This sign, though, is internally illuminated. And it's in connection with its new store in Selden, which is, as I just mentioned a little while ago, is, is opening today. It's celebrating its grand opening today. The variance that we're seeking is for sign area. We're proposing 193 square feet, and the height is proposed at 27 and a half feet tall or high. The parcel is located in the J-2 zoning district in an area that, as you know, is characterized by a variety of retail and other commercial uses. As Mr. Reed mentioned in his memo, the wall down sign that previously existed at the tenant's space was roughly the same size, 186 square feet pursuant to a variance that was granted by this board in 1993. However, in that case, with the wall downs, there were also other ancillary signs that were on the walls, which we are not seeking. Namely, there was a pharmacy sign. I believe there was one other sign that was on the, on the wall down space. Again, Lidl has invested significant amount of money in the conversion and renovation of this space. It wants to succeed. The sign, in its opinion, is critical to the success of this store. Again, like the Montauk Highway situation, you know, it's a, it's a main road. This is Middle Country Road. Cars are traveling again at a high rate of speed. This building, though, is set back twice as far as the building on Montauk Highway, so it's almost 500 feet set back from Middle Country Road here. And in this case, you also have the building somewhat obscured by the new Texas Roadhouse restaurant that was built on the corner. You know, based on these facts, the planning department concluded that the requested sign relief may be appropriate. Again, without going into the criteria under Town Law 267B, I would just say that the granting of the signed variances will have a significant benefit to the applicant without any corresponding detriment to the community.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Good afternoon, Mr. Guardino. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, quite well, actually. I do, I do remember the wall bounce sign. It was quite large, and it did have a pharmacy sign. I believe there was also a deli or something like that, produce deli type sign on that, as an ancillary sign. The one thing, the facade on this, on this building is, seems as though it's actually larger than the one on Montauk Highway. Is that correct?
I believe it is. I think this is, I think Mr. Reed mentioned it's fairly significant in, in its 192 square feet.
The sign itself is 192 square feet, yes.
Yeah. Well, the, the length, I think, is what he's saying.
Oh, the facade, I'm sorry.
The facade length is 192 square feet.
Yes.
We're proposing almost, yeah, 193 square feet in the signage.
And, and the original wall bounce was 186, as you stated, or Mr. Reed stated as well.
Yes.
And so we're looking at a difference of about six square feet without ancillary signs. Is that correct?
Exactly right. We don't have the ancillary signs.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. And just for, just to clarify, that's 192 feet in length. That's the facade. And the sign is 193 square feet. Kind of like the sign was as big as the facade, but we, we see the difference. I'm assuming we have...
Yes, Mr. Cunha. Just one last thing. Also, the, the, this one also has a temporary sign truck. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I'm assuming that this is, this is a bulletin, like a traveling billboard signage, or is this actually a trailer? Like a Lidl trailer?
I think that Mr. Reed may be able to, to come in on this, I think.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, so as Mr. Guardino indicated, the opening was today. I was at the site yesterday and didn't see the trailer. So it just so happened, I was in the neighborhood today, although I didn't get a good look. It appeared to be, Rick, just like you mentioned, a trailer with a sign on it that you would typically see driving along the highway, a, a truck carrying the trailer behind it with the sign. That appeared to be what was evident based upon the drive-by today.
So, Mr. Guardino, I'm going, I'm to assume that if it was a tractor trailer or a trailer with a sign, that it'll actually wind up being in the back of the building for loading from now on and not in the front?
Well, again, this, I don't know exactly what kind of truck it was with the sign, but the sign, the sign truck will be gone. Yes.
Okay.
It will be. And again, you know, and it kind of answers a question for me because I had asked Lidl, well, if you have a grand opening, do you have any sign on the building? And the, the person I spoke with said, I'm not sure if they just put up a banner, which I think is prohibited. And perhaps then what they did is they just brought the truck in. So at least the customers knew which space was a Lidl space. And I'm just speculating. I don't know that. But I can assure you that the, the sign, once the sign goes up and is approved here, that the, the trailer sign will disappear.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chair. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. With reference to speakers on the application, we have none. Mr. Vega?
Mr. Chair, I have no speakers on the application.
I have a correspondence. It's an email from Sue Bella of Rose Drive in Selden. My decision is no, I wouldn't want it any bigger than anybody else's. It is just too obtrusive and would not look right.
All right. That is a comment for the record. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to grant the application as presented type-two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Guardino.
Thank you very much, and I'll get rid of those trucks. Take care. You're welcome.
Case numbers eight and nine, Mastic Beach Rentals LLC, 14 Metzner Road, Rock, Ronkonkoma. Properties located on the north side of Cedar Road East, 110 feet west of Park Road, Mastic Beach. Applicant requests division of a parcel into two plots, one and two, requesting lot area and lot frontage variances for the existing one-family dwelling on lot one. Lot area, lot frontage on both streets, front yard setback from both streets, rear yard and minimum side yard variances for a proposed one-family dwelling on lot two.
Mr. Chair, I have Ali Mendelson for the applicant.
In opposition.
All right, Mr. Mendelson, I heard what you just said, so that you are not the applicant's representative. Do we have applicant's representative? Mr. Mendelson, I'm going to ask you, just to remain where you are, you can mute yourself. And when we, after we hear the application itself, we will call you up to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have Todd O'Connell for the applicant.
Thank you.
I also have a second speaker.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connell, we can see you. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, I hear you now. Thank you.
All right, sir. If you can get, just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Your appearance for the record, please.
My name is Todd O'Connell, architect, doing business at 1200 Veterans Highway, Hop Dog, New York, architect for the applicant.
All right, sir. So you are the applicant's architect. Do you know anything about the applicant's business?
Yes, I do.
All right. We do see that there was, this parcel is owned by the applicant. There's also another one within the township. Do you know when this one was, was acquired?
You're talking about the proposed, right now it's one property that, right, it used to be two separate parcels sometime in the late 60s. The parcels were combined.
All right. Yeah, well, let me assist. The applicant purchased this parcel in 2018. Is that?
Yes, he did.
And since then, how has it been used?
He has been used as a rental. The purpose of this project is that he'd like to build a house next to it so he could live in it.
So he can live in it. And when, when you say he, are you referring to the principals of?
That is correct. That is correct. The owner of it, Blair.
All right. And I'm sorry, who'd you say the owner was?
Blair. B-L-A-I-R.
Is that a first name or a last name?
That is the first name. I believe he's actually on the call as well. I believe he's...
I have the applicant Blair Rochio.
Why don't we, why don't we bring that individual up? Mr. Rochio, we see that you are here. You need to unmute yourself and you need to place your video on if you'd like to participate in the discussion. All right, sir, we can see you now. If you could just unmute yourself, then you're there. Excellent. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
You saw, raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
All right, sir. Your address, please.
14 Metzner Road, Ronkonkoma, New York, 11779.
Thank you, sir. Your relationship to Mastic Rentals, Mastic Beach Rentals LLC is what?
I'm a 50% member.
You're a member of the LLC?
Correct.
And when did the LLC acquire this property on Cedar, on Cedar Road?
I don't know the exact date, but I would say three years ago, maybe, four years ago.
Since it was acquired, how, how has it been used? Do you know?
Yes, I was, I rented it to rental, one-family rental.
Is it presently a rental?
Correct.
Does the Mastic Beach Rentals LLC also have any other properties?
Yes, we have one other.
Is that 3 Seville Road, Mastic Beach?
Yes, it is.
Is that a rental? It's also?
That is a DSS rental, correct.
All right. To your knowledge, has Mastic Beach Rentals LLC ever sought or applied for a rental permit?
Yes. Yes, yes.
And do you think that there are rental permits in place?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, who's, who's in charge of that? You, as you a member or someone else?
My associate slash secretary, Tess.
All right, I, I did some review of the parcel. And in addition to that, the one on Saville Road, and I find no, no, no mental permit in place, no application ever filed for rental permit, nothing. Was that wrong?
Yes, that's, that, well, in order to.
Do we have anything as part of this file?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to let you know that I believe I have the other half of this LLC on here as well.
Sir, what is the name of the other member of the LLC?
Matthew Gambino.
Is it Mr. Gambino that you have?
I have a Tess Sardo.
That's my assistant. I can tell you that you can't rent to DSS or Section Eight without having a rental permit, so I a hundred percent know that we have one for each parcel because both parcels were DSS or Section Eight rented in the beginning.
Do you think that Tess would, would assist you with that knowledge? Should we bring that individual up?
You, you could bring it up and she could assist or definitely locate or find from the past the file or a check to prove that we paid for it. Yes, sure.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Can you promote Tess, please?
Chair.
Yes.
I just, I just talked, I just do not also didn't get, if there's any confusion, at one point in the past, this would have been under the purview of Mastic Beach Village in the last five years, so that it's also a factor. They had it under the previous village. We, we wouldn't have a record of that in our system.
Well, those, those permits would expire on a yearly basis, so that I would expect when we reach two thousand and twenty-one, there would be one in place with the town.
Agreed. I just wanted to point that out. There was a village in this area in the last five years.
Thank you.
Not in the norm.
All right, there is someone being promoted with the last name of Sardo. Is that the individual?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, so.
Doesn't look like they have capabilities of video. I've asked to unmute them.
All right, and I do see a message from that individual saying they logged in via PC with no camera or microphone access, so I understand that to be the case. So, so let me, let, let me state that my investigation, at least into the records of the town concerning this parcel, indicates that for the two parcels owned by Mastic Beach Rentals LLC for the last three or four years that have been used as rentals, neither maintain a valid rental permit, neither have applied to the Town of Brookhaven for a rental. So, Mr. Rochio, where there's a violation on a parcel, this board will not hear a variance request. What I intend to do is hold you over for a month. You can either produce a rental permit for, for both parcels, or you can apply for one. If you've applied for one, just applied for one.
Yes.
We will certainly be willing, we will certainly be willing to hear your request for a land division. But not before. Do you understand?
Yes, I understand, and I'll get working on it right away because it doesn't, something's not right. Is there a possibility that there used to be a Mastic Beach Village that I applied to that has nothing to do with Brookhaven?
Well, there, there was formerly Mastic, the Village of Mastic Beach, which has since dissolved and has become, has returned to the jurisdiction of the town. Rental permits last for one year only, though, so that even if you had a rental permit with the Village of Mastic Beach, although two thousand and eighteen, I think these parcels were acquired, I doubt that ever occurred. You would have at least to have, to had to apply for an extension or for a permit with the town. Nothing exists.
Okay, so I will definitely come down tomorrow and reapply or just apply for the first time if that's the case to Brookhaven.
Mr. O'Connell, did you have further comments for the board here?
I'm sorry?
Did you have any comment for the board here?
Uh, no, not until the next meeting.
All right, do we have?
Mr. Mendelson is on with us still.
And do we have any other person wishing to speak?
We do not.
All right, let's, Mr. Mendelson, if you could hear me, you can unmute yourself now. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, please. To be sworn.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
Yes, I do.
So, let's start with your name and address.
It's Mendelson Law Firm, PLLC, three sixty-seven Butter Lane, Bridgehampton, New York, one one nine three two.
Thank you, sir. So you, you've been present for the duration of this hearing. You do see that I'm, the board is refusing to hear it based upon what we perceive as a violation. And then I'm holding it over to, to address that violation. So in terms of the, the the issues concerning the land division that was applied for, we're not, we're not delving into those issues today. There'll be no presentation on a land division. So therefore, your comments that you probably had prepared are best, would best be provided to us at a latter hearing, at a later hearing.
Agreed, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I will attend at the next scheduled hearing.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, if this, does any, anyone else wish to say anything before I ask for a motion? Is there a motion to hold over until?
Some letters. Do you want them now or at the next hearing?
At the next hearing, yes. Motion, is there a motion to hold over until March twenty-four?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay. I'll second it all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day all.
Did something happen?
Everybody's gone.
Everyone disappeared.
I hear you, Paul.
Oh, okay.
I have everybody.
Yeah, I think we're all still here, just.
Yeah, it's just a.
You, maybe?
It's just a view change. Yeah, let me see if I could.
Gallery. Here we go. Fixed it. Right?
Yes, so if I say, so, so if I say.
Maybe one of us tapped it, you or Andy tapped it.
Okay, case number twelve, William Stoner and Paulette Orlando, eighteen Autumn Drive, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the west side of Autumn Drive, six hundred and seventeen feet south of Winter Lane, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests special permit to harbor two goats.
Mr. Chair, I have William Stoner and Paulette Orlando.
Hi there.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. I do see Mr. Stoner and is it Ms. Orlando?
This is my daughter.
Very good. Hello. Let's start by getting you both sworn, if I could, if you can give your attention to the board's attorney.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Very good. And can we have your names, please, and addresses?
Yes, I'm William Stoner.
And I'm Paisley Stoner.
We live at eighteen Autumn Drive, Mount Sinai, New York, one one seven six six.
Thank you, sir. We are familiar with the relief that you seek from this board. It is a special permit to harbor two goats. We don't have Chris. All right. Well, why don't I just read the report? Yeah, is that right? All right, we are, I apologize, we are having some technical difficulty. I normally start with the board's planner for this application. Excuse me.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are you reading the report?
No, we have this under control. Mr. Reed is coming back on and he's back with us and he'll testify.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm ready.
Welcome back.
And the property is located on the west side of Autumn Drive, six hundred and seventeen feet south of Winter Drive in the Hammond of Mount Sinai. And the parcel is improved with a two-story residence and swim pool. The applicant is seeking a special permit to harbor two pygmy goats. And according to Wikipedia, goats of the pygmy variety can range from approximately forty-three to fifty-six centimeters and are often used as companion animals. The application is for a special permit, and as such, it is recommended that the applicant demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the application conforms to the special permit requirement depicted in section eighty-five fifty-seven of Town Code, including but not limited to the following. That the safety, health, welfare, comfort, convenience, or order of the town will not be adversely affected by the proposed use and its location, and that the use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties or properties in the surrounding area or impair the value thereof. The entire parcel enjoys fencing. The survey reveals a vinyl fence in the front, stockade on the south side and a chain link on both the west and north property lines. The height of fencing is recommended to be clarified by the applicant. For four-foot fencing may hinder the retention of the animals. Staff surmises that the goats will be harbored year-round. An inquiry to the applicant's representative is recommended as to whether the animals will have any shelter, especially in colder months, as well as the behavior of the animals and the means of removal of manure. And the board may wish to limit the duration of the special permit should the board look favorably on the application. And which is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRA and mitigation is imposed and recommended for the board's consideration.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner, Ms. Stoner, and, sir, who would like to speak on this, on behalf of this application?
Sure, I'll make some brief comments and then my daughter would like to say something if she could, also very brief. And I'll, I'll address some of those issues that came up from the planner. Thank you. So, thank you, first of all, for hearing our case. I'm, as I mentioned, joined by my eleven-year-old daughter today, who'll say a few words also. These goats will be locked behind a locked fence and when unsupervised and at night will be in a locked kennel. And there is, there, we're purchasing a heated doghouse, an extra-large doghouse that will be heated. And of course, because the intent is that these are our pets, that if there are any very cold temperatures, we will, you know, either bring them into our house into a pack-and-play type style or into our garage and, and make sure that their, their well-being is taken care of for sure. So, the, there is a fence around the whole property, but when unsupervised, they'll be in the locked kennel or at night. So there will be no time that these goats have free rein to wander the property. There will be no permanent structure. It is a dog kennel that you've seen at Tractor Supply that they would be housed in and locked in. And also, like I mentioned, they would have, they would have shelter over the top of that and also a doghouse that they'd be able to, to actually sleep in. The goats that we're considering, you've heard pygmy, also two neutered goats, two male neutered goats. So there won't be any babies and there won't be any breeding. And as far as waste, we will be composting on-site and using it in our flower beds around the entire property. And if there's any extra for any reason, it would be disposed of properly. Those are my direct comments, and I'm happy to answer some questions in a moment, but I wanted my daughter to be able to read a statement that she's made because these are two, the consideration is two pet goats.
We'd be happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paisley Stoner and I live at eighteen Autumn Drive. I am here to request a permit for two pygmy goats. My brother and I are allergic to cats and dogs, and I would really love to have a pet. So we want two goats. We have picked names Brady and Ace.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those are very nice names for the goats. Let me ask the board, are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lindsay.
Hi, good afternoon, folks. How are you?
Good.
And that was a very good speech you had, young lady. I appreciate it. And it seems they will have care by you. So just let me, a couple of quick questions from you. How did you get involved with these? I know they come from Britain, originally Africa. And how did you find out about these goats? And what, and what, what is your attraction to them and?
Yeah. Good question. And there's, we'll both answer a little bit. So mine, I, I grew up in Western New York, in a town called Freedom, New York, if you, if you can believe that. And had, had goats growing, growing up my whole life. So I've, I have experience with goats. We didn't breed them or anything, but again, they were pets because they're, they're actually very fun animals to have around. And, you know, of course, we had dogs and horses and everything else, but goats I found to be very entertaining and were quite fun. So when we discovered that both of my children are allergic to cats and dogs, we, we wanted that type of companion type animal. So Paisley did some looking and saw some goats that she really liked before, you know, we started looking around. So do you want to say something?
Yeah, my brother and I are like allergic and I got attracted to the goats and I really liked them, so I really wanted them.
And in advance, so we know, you know, that this process would take a while, so I've been talking to some, some farmers on Long Island because we want to also help our local farmers. If there were goats available that we are, for the type that we are looking for, and there are. There's, there's someone that we've contacted that had two baby goats just born, two male goats. And, you know, it all is dependent on whether or not we're approved for the permit or not.
Okay, my next question is, the run that you're going to have, the pen, is it going to be a concrete pen, a concrete pad poured?
No, there's no, there'll be no permanent structure, so no concrete pad. It would be, it would be a kennel like you would have for the size for like a Labrador.
For a Labrador. Okay, so you're going to have a fenced-in, a chain-link fence?
Correct. So the entire property is, has, has fence and it would always stay behind that fence, but also when unsupervised in the locked kennel, which is, the kennel, which is that, that run that you're talking about, like a Labrador run. Not, not really large, no cement pad.
Okay, um, next question. If you talked about the, the manure, now you're going to use that around your gardens, correct?
Correct.
How will you store that before you use them around your gardens? Because you can't, you're not just going to dump them in there with two feet of snow around.
Right, right. So in the, yeah, in the winter time, I'll buy a canister, those, they have those large composting canisters that we could use.
Correct?
Say that again, Ron, Mr. Lindsay. I'm sorry, it faded in and out.
I'm sorry, you'll, you'll, you'll find that at Tractor Supply along with your doghouse?
Correct, yeah, they've got everything.
Just Googled all that.
Yep.
And so if you do have extra, you'll keep that in that canister until you make room to dump more out, correct?
Yes.
Now, I'm not sure how much manure there would be with two miniature goats. With, one of the concerns we have is the smell for the neighbors. Have any of the neighbors petitioned you at all about this?
So, we haven't, I've had neighbors stop and, and actually, you know, pleasantly surprised. The neighbors on both sides were very friendly. Well, we're friendly with all of the neighbors right around us, right? So, the ones that got the certified letter, obviously, we have a better relationship with than where we went to five-hundred-foot radius. But the immediate neighbors are supportive, and one of them said, what can I do to make sure that my voice is heard to say that I'm supportive? And I said, oh, you could call the board, you could join the, the hearing too. But both of them are in agreement that this is not going to be a big problem. And, you know, we're not breeding goats, they're two pet goats. And when they're fixed, the smell is less, especially with male goats, because the, you don't get that musky strong odor that you would get from goats that are, you know, male goats that are, you know, bucks, if you will. But any manure and whatnot, I would also be very attentive to that. They both have dogs on either side of us too. So, you know, they're open to it.
Okay. Okay, um, I really have no further questions, Mr. Chair. I have one thing I'd like to put in front of the board before this is granted. I'd like to give them a, a two-year permit, special permit on that. Is that adequate for everybody? I'd like to give them a, a two-year permit, special permit on that. Is that adequate for everybody?
We, we certainly will, I'll let you make the motion, Mr. Lindsay. Normally, we, we have, we do limited durations for the beginning, and if that's what you want, and that's what the motion will be, that's fine. We do have correspondence on this application, and I'm not sure if we have any speakers.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do not have any speakers.
All right, then, we're going to go directly to the correspondence that we've received.
This is an email from Paula Semeca of Nine Plum Tree Lane, Mount Sinai. "The most obvious question is why? They can be pets only in the broadest sense of the word. They are herd animals, that's why you need to. They can't live in the home, they poop everywhere and are destructive. Living outdoors, even with a shed, they will defecate and urinate everywhere, drawing flies. The smell of manure travels long distance. My grandpa had a farm, especially in summer. Their water supply will attract mosquitoes. Since they need more than hay for food, spillage of their grains and pellets will attract vermin. Goats are messy, loud, mischievous animals. They need climbing toys and forage, which means more space than a suburban backyard can provide. They are expert escape artists. They can get loose in the neighborhood. Not to mention when they go into heat, which is about monthly, they are extra loud. So even though I don't live next door to these nice people, I'm close enough to be firmly opposed to a special permit to harbor livestock in my neighborhood."
That was, was that it? Was it?
That's it.
All right.
That's it.
Mrs. Stoner, let me ask, if I could, I know that we touched on in, in, in the planning comments, the fencing and the height of the fencing. Did you speak directly to that issue?
The, the fencing, the chain-link fence, I believe it's the north, it's the west side, is a four-foot, it's around four feet. And
The, and the reason, I'll tell you why it's brought up. Believe it or not, apart from the fact that we handle many, we handle a array of matters before us. The zoning board also has dealt with animals for years, all kinds of animals. When it comes to these goats, we know that they climb each other, and the top one gets to escape. So in this instance, one would climb the other and then get to jump possibly over a four-foot fence. And that may not be adequate to, to house them so that without a, a risk that they will, at least one of them will, will leave. So the section of the fence that's four feet, is that surrounding the, the entire backyard, or is that just a one area?
It's, it's the, it's the rear part of the yard. And, and just to reiterate, these goats will not go unsupervised and have free rein in the full yard. They, there, it's like having a dog. You want to make sure that they can't get out underneath the fence or jump over the fence. And having had goats my whole life, I know that they are very crafty, and they'll climb on each other. These will not be unsupervised goats. They'll be in the kennel when unsupervised by myself, my wife. At all times, there will be an adult. Even if the children want to let them out, there has to be an adult in the backyard. We've already agreed to that. The other is, we've, there's very affordable GPS trackers that people use for dogs. If, under any circumstance, if for some reason, there, there was an escape, the GPS tracker would immediately track that goat down so that we could grab it and make sure that it was, you know, put back into the kennel. But I, I just want to make that clear. Even though that the, the, the back part of our property's fence is a little lower, they're not unsupervised, and there won't be an opportunity to escape in that manner.
All right. Mr. Lindsay, I thought, I thought I heard that you were going to ask another question. Did you, did you have anything further?
Couple of college.
Yes, sir.
Um, it seems you've answered all of that lady's questions except for the fence. Do you have a six-foot fence around the rest of the property?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Because real quick, my sister and I went upstate to my cousin's house years ago. Goat jumped over a four-foot fence, and we woke up in the morning, and they were standing on top of her black Jetta. And I know they will, I know they can't escape. Would, would you be opposed with six-foot fence across the back of the property?
Not opposed, you know, it's another expense that, you know, that would have to be incurred.
Which we, we totally understand, but that was the one point that the neighbor had brought up that would be a, a thing to deter the, maybe if the other board members or whatnot to think about. If you can understand what I'm saying. I don't know where everybody stands on this. I, I was going to close and hold it anyway and get everybody's opinion on this. But is that something you would consider?
Sure, if, if that's what, if that was going to be the requirement to get the permit, I would have to look into what the cost, the cost would be to, to do something like that. I forget what, you know, my frontage and back is to be able to do that. But like I said, you know, if that's what was required as part of the conditional permit for two years, you know, I would have to do it.
Okay, that's all. I really have no further questions. I think it's a wonderful application. I'm just going to bring it to the board in the back, and we will talk about this.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? If there's nothing further, all us for motion.
Yes, is Charlotte to close and hold?
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay to close and hold.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Mrs. Stoner, we will have a decision for you this evening on the application. You'll have it in the mail within a week or so. Good luck to both of you. And I suspect we're going to see you again in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that, that concludes the two PM calendar. The, the next interval calendar commences at four. Does the board have a motion to return to four PM?
Yes.
Motion second have been made all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries.
For calendar, we have case number thirty-six of February tenth, two thousand twenty-one, Casey Erdman, requesting March tenth, and case number thirty-eight of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, Mohammed Iqbal requesting March twenty-fourth.
Does the board have a motion?
Move.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we can resume with case number nineteen.
Case number nineteen, PCN two LLC, two sixty-nine, South Country Road, Brookhaven. Property is located on the north side of South Country Road, six hundred and thirty-five feet east of Bell Haven Road, Brookhaven. Applicant requests renewal of special permit for bed and breakfast.
Mr. Chair. Let the record reflect that, Rikunia Rikus.
Hello.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I have Diane Moje for the applicant. Diane, can we just get your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn in?
Yes, I swear to the truth, the whole truth, not much truth.
Yes, I do.
All right, Ms. Moje.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Diane Moje, DNI Expediting Services, offices located at seven seven nine Horse Block Road in Farmingville. Mr. Chairman, this is an application that was before the board approximately a year ago. We obtained building permits for the additions and to construct a proposed bed and breakfast. As you can see, it's under construction. We do have valid building permits for the construction thereof. The bed and breakfast has not even had a chance to operate as of yet. So since it was only granted for one year, we were up for renewal again. And that brings us back before the board. So my request would be that if the board could see its way clear to grant more than one year, to give them a chance to complete the construction and get open, then at least they can operate for at least a year before we have to come back for another renewal.
Is there a motion? Is there any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Acting Chairperson?
Thank you. Mr. Burksen.
So Diane, are you familiar with the, with the recommendations of the, of the planner, our planner with respect to the operation of the bed and breakfast?
Original recommendations?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and those, and you're saying that the, the bed and breakfast hasn't operated yet, so that...
Under construction, as you can see by the photographs, it's not, it's not completed as of yet.
Okay, so when does the permit actually expire?
The renewal, the actual building permit, you want to know when it expires?
No, you said that, was there a special permit, the special permit was issued, correct?
Special permit was already granted. We already obtained building permits for
Right.
All that it granted.
When does it expire, the special permit?
I believe it expires, it expired January twenty-second, two thousand twenty. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one is when it would have expired.
So you're asking for two years from that, from that expiration date, is that correct?
Yes, I'd like to request at least two years from that expiration date to give them a chance to complete the construction, get it up and, and operating, and then at least when we come back for renewal, it'll be a true renewal, and it will have been operating for some time.
When do you expect them to be complete?
We're, we're hoping by the summertime that it will be completed and opened.
So you don't expect to be operating before, let's say, June of this year?
Correct.
Okay.
It really depends on how it goes, weather plays a factor, the contractors and whatnot. It might be a little bit sooner, but I'm going to assume by the time we get all of our COs and documents in order because that will take longer than the actual construction.
Okay, all right. I have nothing further.
Does the board have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the application for a special permit for a two-year period from January, I think you said, January twenty-first, which was the expiration date of the original permit, subject to the, all the continuing conditions and recommendations of the BZA planner.
So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Moje.
Thank you.
Just, just before you go, Anthony, there was no, there were no speakers on it, there would no, it was not...
Mr. Burksen, there was no speakers, and I believe there was no correspondence?
No.
No correspondence.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burks.
Case number twenty, Gail Leroy, fifty-four ninety-seven Express Drive North, Holtsville, located on the north side of Expressway Drive North, two hundred and seventy-five feet west of Woodycrest Drive, Holtsville. Applicant requests permission for proposed second-story residence addition and minimum and total sideyard variances for a proposed one-story wraparound addition on a fifty-foot wide lot.
Mr. Wisdom, Mr. Masrela, I have a Joe Walker for the applicant. I'm promoting them right now. Mr. Walker, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can we just give your attention to the board's attorney, so that way you can be sworn?
Absolutely.
Yes, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not much truth.
I do.
Mr. Walker, would you like to tell the board?
Joseph Walker for Double Check Builders, two seventy Ron Concomer Avenue in Ron Concomer for the applicant. I submitted photographs for the board's review. The two immediate properties to the east of the subject property have previously benefited from grants from this board for similar relief that we're requesting now. The board is familiar with this area of the town, and there's granted variances of this nature in, in the past. The proposed addition would be totally consistent with the existing structures and architecture, nature, and character of the neighborhood and for this part of Holtsville. And clearly, the previous grants that the board has granted have not negatively affected the property values in the area. So we would ask the board to view the application favorably. You can see by the narrowness of the lot that virtually anything we do on the side would require a variance. We tried to minimize the request, and I'd be trying to, glad to have, answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you. How are you doing, Mr. Walker?
I'm fine, thanks. Yourself?
Good, so just point out for me a couple of things here on the survey. So in essence, the, you're, you're going, you're going back, extending back behind the original residence on the same, on the same same story, you're extending?
That, the, the extension in the back and on the side is one story. So it goes back approximately eight feet, and then it goes to the side. So it's actually a wraparound one-story addition. The second story proposed, that's proposed, the proposed second story is a continuation of a second story that was built previously and ends at the back of the house where the one-story addition begins. So the, the survey is a bit confusing. But, but there is, I, I believe that this property was the beneficiary of a previous BZA grant for the second story that is in the front of the house. So if you look at the photograph, you'll see there's a small portico and then a second story. We're going to continue that second story to the end of the house where the first story ends at that point.
Give me a second to get my bearings on it. I see the walk-up. Now, in relation to this picture, what, what side, are we looking at, the side?
I don't think that's the picture of the house of the subject property. That's, that's not the subject property.
Maybe that's what's throwing me off.
That, that, that would do it. The subject property has, it's white, it's a white house with a skirt roof across the front.
Mr. Masrela, I accidentally put up a photo of case twenty-two. I do not have a PDF of the photos for case twenty. That was submitted.
Okay.
I apologize.
No problem. All right, so Mr. Walker, you were giving me a, a pretty good description before we started looking at the pictures. Can we go back?
Sure.
So I see the, I, I, I see the, I see the shaded area, and then I see the orange coloring, which I believe represents the second story that's proposed?
That's correct.
Okay, and the, the, the yellow-colored outliner would be the first-story extension?
That's correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Now, now I'm with you. So in essence, in essence, the front of the house where the shading is but no coloring, is that one story or two stories?
No, that's two stories. That's, that's an existing, that's existing two stories, which we have a CO for, which in order to get the permit for that, I believe that the property owner was a, was a beneficiary of a previous grant from this board.
Gotcha. Okay, so, so in essence, that orange area is the extension of the second story?
That's correct.
All right, and going back again to the highlighted yellow, that's an extension of the first story?
That's correct.
All right, I'm with you now. Thank you for the assistance on that.
No problem. It's, it's confusing. It's confusing because where the second story, which there is a CO on, ends in the back, it's like a dormer, it's like a, you know, the thing started out as a bungalow, so it's a bungalow-looking thing on the, on the, on the second floor, which is, you know, it's, it's really not safe or anything like that as far as the height of the ceiling is concerned.
Gotcha. All right, now, and just again, going back to the survey, I see that there is a brick walkway. To the right of the walkway is asphalt drive. The left side of that walkway is grass?
Um, let me just...
Is that all asphalt out front?
I think there is, I think there is some grass on the other side of the asphalt driveway, as my memory serves me, yes.
And then what about moving now towards the right side of the house coming up the asphalt drive? Is that now grass behind, you know, once you get to the building itself? Oh, I'm only asking this because I see towards the rear, you know, something on the survey that says asphalt. So I'm wondering, does that, does that continue, or is there a grass square patch, and then you have an asphalt walk back there?
You know, I can't, I don't recall. Uh, no, I think that, I, there, there's a fence, there's a fence that, uh, that ends, you can see where it says there's a fence with a gate. I think there's a little bit of asphalt back there, which basically serviced the cellar entrance. But on the other side of the asphalt, I believe there's grass. I didn't-
That was my question, forward of that fence then would be grass, so does asphalt drive, patch of grass, asphalt walk?
That's right.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, can you talk to me a little bit about, um, the utilization of these, uh, spaces?
And what they're- Right, right now, the second floor is a bedroom for the homeowner's son, adult's son. And, and there is a, there is a bedroom on the first floor, you can see the house is narrow. So basically, what she wants to do is put the other bedroom upstairs, have two bedrooms upstairs and take the, capture the space downstairs to living space and expand the kitchen area with a dining area. Uh, that, that's basically it.
So that, that colorization there of the extension in that yellow would be the extend, the extended, uh, dining and kitchen area?
That's correct.
And then we're just talking about bedroom area upstairs and utilizing what's under those, uh, bedroom areas upstairs now to utilize as regular space rather than bedroom area?
That's right.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else that's here to speak or any, uh, written comment?
Is there anything from the board?
Mr. Wisdom, I do not have any speakers, I'm asking.
I don't have any, I have no correspondence.
Mr. Wisdom?
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I was just curious, uh, if we can actually just find out how many square feet are actually being added to this house?
I think, I think it's about six hundred.
On the Building Department denial, it says the wraparound addition adds two hundred and forty square feet, and the second story addition adds three hundred and seventy.
It's six ten.
Okay. Alright, um, and this is a fifty-foot parcel limited to a thousand and five hundred, thousand first floor and five hundred second floor, but you said that they had gotten a grant for the second floor the last time, is that correct?
I believe there was a, a previous grant, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Is there anything further from the board? Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, make a motion to, uh, approve the application as submitted, I too.
Second. Motion's by Mr. Mazzarella, second by Rick Lazarus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Twenty-two, case number twenty-two. Ada Hussein, care of Integrity Expediting seventeen seventeen, North Ocean Avenue, Medford. Property is located on the east side of Sweetsie Town Road, two thousand three hundred and ninety-one feet, south of Half Mill Road, Middle Island. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for two existing one-story residence additions. Also side yard variance for existing detached garage not built in conformance with permit number two-two-zero-eight-three-three.
Mr. Chairman, I have Mitch Brendel for the applicant. Welcome back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Uh, Mr. Brendel, we can see you, you can, you should unmute yourself, very good, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. If you could just please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Sure thing.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Alright, then, so let's start with your appearance for the record.
Sure thing, Mitch Brendel, Integrity Expediting, office located at one-seven-one-seven North Ocean Avenue, Suite F, that's in Medford, New York, one-one-seven-six-three, and we are, uh, seeking this evening uh, the minimum and total side yard setback variance in order to maintain an existing one-story addition to the house, as well as the existing detached garage, which was not built in conformance with the permit that was issued in nineteen ninety. Uh, the owner purchased the home, current owner purchased the home in February two thousand eighteen in an as-is condition, and they were originally applying for a certificate of existing use for the house. And these, uh, non-conforming structures came up in the deficiency notice, and so we're just looking to go through the process to legalize all structures on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel, before I give it to the board for questions, um, just clarify for us, the relief seeks, um, minimum and total side yard for two existing one-story additions. Well, I see the hatched mark, um, filled-in corner of the, of the home, as one of the additions, where is the other?
The other is, is directly south of that same addition, I'm looking on my survey here. I just want to make sure I'm telling you in the right direction, so-
The survey doesn't indicate either way.
Okay, there, upon, uh, visiting the home with the architect, we saw that on the same side of the house where that six, six-point-one-by-nine-point-eight addition is, there was also a, a small crawl space built under an addition that is directly next to that on the rear of the house.
Very good, thank you. Questions from the board? I believe this should be Mr. Wisdom.
Yeah. So, I see that, uh, this is Tracy's permits, is she there today?
No, uh, this is Mr. Brendel, he's, uh-
I'm sorry. Yep. Oh, we're on twenty-two, I'm sorry, um. So how many square feet is this house going to be?
Total square footage of the house. It is, I'm telling you just-
And it's a one-story?
One-story.
Okay, and, um, is there a garage attached to this house?
Is that- There is not a garage attached to the house, it is-
Detached.
There is a detached garage, and it's believed that there was an attached garage, which was converted to living space.
And I'm sure that's the smaller portion of the existing going-to-be house, right?
Correct.
Okay, and when was the, when was the garage built?
The garage, I, I believe it was built during, in the early nineties when the permit was issued, but I cannot a hundred percent confirm that as the current owner recently acquired the home in two thousand eighteen.
And, and he's holding a, um, is it, was it permitted and granted, uh, back then?
It was permitted as a two-car detached garage, but they never obtained a final CO for the structure.
Okay, so-
I, I will tell you that the permit was issued in nineteen ninety.
Okay, so it's, 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 there's not much we can do about it, but it's holding a nine-foot, one-half inch to the front of the garage and a ten-foot eight, three-quarter inch to the rear. Nothing's changed with this house? It's not out of character with the neighborhood?
No, I believe it's in keeping with the nature and character of the neighborhood.
Alright, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom, is there anything further from the board? Mr. Brendel, um, the, the, what's the setback requirement for the garage, is it ten feet?
Ten feet.
So you heard not for a lot of interest, but Lynn, looking at the garage, it looks like it has, uh, regular, uh, doors on it as opposed to a garage door?
Yeah, this garage, uh, on a previous survey that was sent into the town for the certificate of existing use, I think the previous use of this garage was a barn, and there were some stables on the property. Those have all been removed, and this garage is only being used for storage.
And, uh, do you know that by visiting it yourself or, or from the applicant?
That is correct, by visiting myself.
Alright, thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If we have no speaker or any communication on the board for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I can make a motion to, uh, grant the application. Second.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you, board, have a great evening.
You too.
Case number twenty-five, Mary Mendel, care of Jennifer Leeds, PO Box one-fifty Quorum. Property is located on the east side of Donella Walk, sixty-five feet south of Center Walk, Davis Park, Fire Island National Seashore. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for existing first-story deck extension, total side yard variance for second existing first-story deck extension, front yard setback and total side yard variances for existing second-story deck with steps, total side yard variance for proposed first and second-story wraparound deck.
Mr. Chair, I have Jennifer Leeds for the applicant.
Thank you. Jennifer, we can see you, are you, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I am.
Thanks, let's start with, uh, I guess getting you sworn.
Raise your right hand. You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Thank you, and your appearance for the record, please.
Hi, Jennifer Leeds, my office is located at one-thirty-four Sequoia Drive, Quorum, New York.
Thank you, Jennifer, I had some difficulty in reviewing for this, um, application, identifying which structures are which. The pictures are helping, but why don't you go through with us, uh, each of the structures requiring relief and, and describe for the board where they are?
Okay, um, the whole second-story deck that you see there on the north side with the stairs, okay, we're here for that, there's a small section uh, where the stairs are landing right there, that we're coming for, underneath the stairs, so where they land years ago, um, there was a first-story deck coming in, but that part was not there. So I would say it's about, um, I think we called it, what did we measure it out for? I think a five-by-ten, under those steps. And then when you go down the, the, uh, first-story deck there on the north side of the house, the back piece of the deck is also uh, what we're coming for, so that's, that was also added on. Um, this was added on prior to my-
I'm sorry, is that the back?
Oh, here we go, good. So you see where the front door, the side door is there?
Okay, yes.
Starting there, going, heading east, uh, that section, uh, was added on too. So the original deck built with the house was a big wide ramp coming up to that doorway with a small cutout of the deck where those stairs are. I think this might be helpful because, can you, can you see this? Everything I highlighted in the green was built, well, I should say, everything on that side not highlighted was built with the original home. And at some point in the late seventies, they added on the rest. It was around seventy-nine, eighty, so they, they, they put on the rest of that decking.
And then could you go through the, um, the photos of each of the elevations of the house again for us, just slowly, just bear with us a second?
Mr. Chair, I believe this is the rear and the side?
That's the front and the side.
The front and the side, yes.
Yeah.
And that's the side.
Do we have any other elevation? Do we have the back and the other side?
Yes.
Just go through each of them and just stop when you-
That's the front.
That's the front again.
Mr. Chair, I only have three photos.
Oh, so what's, what's the next one?
No, they're on the same page, maybe scroll down, because they're, they're on the same PDF, okay? They, keep going. I don't, I don't know where the rest of the photos went, there's a page missing, um, with the back.
I, I see the, this looks like the rear.
That's the back, yep.
Right there?
Yes.
Alright, the decking that exists, um, uh, holds a a setback of, of what?
Okay, so, uh, it ha, it makes the minimum side yard, so the, so the minimum side yard is ten-point-four, um, and that, that deck, uh, the first-story deck holds eleven-point-five, and the second is thirteen. We're coming for total side yard, so the total side yard allowable is twenty-six. We're asking for twenty-three-point-two for the first, and, um, for the second, and twenty-four-point-seven for the first-story deck.
When, when you referred to deck extension, can you tell me on which geographical, geographic side of the house that deck is, extension is?
It's on the north side, where you can see the picture that's up right now, there's actually a shed on it.
That's the, that's, okay, that's taken from the rear yard?
Yes, you're looking from the back, now you're-
So that's the total side yard, and is it the, both the first story and the second story?
Correct.
So then the, uh, in the front yard and side yard for existing second-story deck, where's that one?
The front yard, I don't, I'm not really quite sure why, but they, they denied me to the stairs. If you go to the front of the house, they denied three feet to the staircase right there.
Alright, so that's a three-foot section, that's the front and side yard for, for existing second-story deck. So they denied the, what, the last three feet of the second-story deck from the stair?
They denied it at the bottom of the stairs, but if you want to go to the second-story deck, it's fourteen-point-five. But they denied it as a full structure, a, a second-story deck with stairs, and they gave me a denial of three-foot front yard.
Well, so, so that's, that's what, from a clarity point, there's reference to a second-story deck and a second deck, second-story deck extension. I don't see the difference, I don't-
Sorry, deck extension, there's only a first story, story extension, I, there's no second.
I, I'm seeing that, so there was a front yard for a deck extension, a total side yard for a second deck extension, and then a front and side yard for the existing second-story deck with steps?
Yes.
And the set, the setbacks that they presently hold, um, how do they compare generally to this neighborhood?
Uh, the neighbor next door, uh, as you can see actually in that photo, he has, uh, side decks, he has a four-foot side, um, uh, setback from his, uh, no, the picture that we had up was perfect.
Is that the yellow house? Yeah, I saw the roof deck on it also, are those permitted decks to your knowledge?
Yeah, they came in December, uh, they were December eleventh, case number thirty-four.
And what was the, what was the result of, uh, that hearing?
With Nicole and the Building Department, because they didn't have a variance for the side yard, but they did have a fifteen-foot front yard, um, I don't know, maybe, maybe their side yard was already established.
And that, uh, that application was granted?
Yes.
Alright, this is on, is this on Fire Island?
Yes, this is Davis Park.
And do we have communication from-
John Lund.
From Fins or from their advisory committee? Here we go.
Um, I have a letter of no objection from, uh, Fire Island National Seashore and, uh, from Davis Park Zoning Advisory Committee. Um, they reviewed the application, uh, we find no reason not to grant the request, these were small lots created under previous zoning guidelines, and the applicant is trying to make improvements to the property and comply with surrounding structures in the immediate area, the proposal, the proposed structural additions keep the house centered on the lot, allow setbacks on all sides while providing better egress to this two-story building in an emergency. That's it.
Alright, um, thank you. With regard to, um, the use of the, of the residence, uh, we recognize this is on Fire Island and is most likely, uh, uh, summer use. There appear to be multiple entrances from the, the, uh, from, uh, Donella Walk to the residence, I see, we see more than, um, one, I think there's two uh, cable, um, connections to the house. Do you know how the house is used?
It's just, it's a single-family dwelling, it's just family-owned, it's just the family that goes there, there's, they don't rent it.
Alright, thank you very much. Is there anything further from the board on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha?
I'm just curious about the part that's highlighted that says proposed, uh, first-floor deck, and I guess that's a roof deck as well, or no, and roof?
Uh, it's a first and second-story, uh, wraparound deck, um, running along the back of the house, it'll be four-point-five foot wide. Uh, and then it just, uh, turns slightly on to the south side, and over there it will be five-point-five. Again, we're just asking for total side yard on those, um, it's twenty feet from the rear. Uh, it's, uh, within the ten-point-four that's allowed on the side for minimum setback. Uh, and again, that house next door, um, to the south has a similar deck, I don't really know if they needed a variance for that particular part of the house.
Now, will that deck, will that deck connect to the one to the north, where the shed is, or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, no further questions, Mr. Chair. Yes. Okay. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Mazarella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 26, Lawrence and Catherine Collins, 5 Endora Lane, Lake Grove, located on the east side of Endora Lane, 139 feet south of Morris Avenue, Lake Grove. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool. Side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have the applicant, Mr. Collins. But I also have a note here saying that Mr. Peter Speck was the.
We'll take Mr. Speck.
I don't have Mr. Speck up here.
Oh, all right. I would, why don't we bring?
I think Mr. Speck did name himself properly. I have someone raising their hand.
I do see someone raising their hand, just so that must be Mr. Speck's other name.
Hello, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
Very good. Now, how was it that we were supposed to know that it was you with the, the name as Ella Rose?
Um, that's my stepdaughter.
I'll help us out a little bit more next time. It's good to see you. Let me get you sworn, please.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
Yes, I do.
And your appearance for the record.
My name is Dieter Speck. My off, from Spectacular Pools. My office is at 265 Brookfield Avenue, Center Riches.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
We're looking to build a pool on premises 11 feet off of the rear property line. What this shows, what this doesn't show is we're looking to fence in between the pool and the house and to create a little more safety for the family with the pool. So it's really trying to push the pool any closer to the house. This would really leave no room for dinner table or anything. And there's currently a pool located at, where am I right now? At 22 Morris Avenue, Lake Grove, which is approximately 10 feet off the property line as well.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Mr. Speck, how are you?
Good. Thank you.
So you said that there's one at what?
I have on my records at 21, 22 Morris.
Is that number 51 on our map on the screen right now?
I don't know how you interpret these maps. I'm sorry. It is, it's about a tenth of a mile away, which is obviously very close.
Okay.
Mr. Cunha, this aerial is actually, this is actually the house numbers.
Oh, okay. They are the house numbers. All right. Thank you. All right. So we don't see. All right. Very good. Um, we do have one next door. I see some over on, it looks like Birch Street as well. Okay. So there are other, it conforms to the area. Now speak to me about the plastic shed in the side yard.
Just a plastic shed that the homeowner is looking to keep. It's a behind, it'll be behind the fence line of the, of the home. So I don't really see it being an issue with the board, you know, I don't see it really being an issue. And my client's hoping that I can legalize it for them.
Okay. And what's in the shed? Do you know by any chance? Have you been there?
I, I don't know what's in the shed.
Okay. And obviously it's only here because it's close to the property line. It looks like it's quite small. All right. And I know there's a highlight on the survey, but I don't see it in the call of the record regarding the, it looks like filter five p, five feet off property line?
Is the code now five or six? What is the code?
I would have to defer to Mr. Reed on that.
I believe it's four. I believe it's four, but you know, I, I don't really, if it, I don't.
I, I just wanted to know if that's, if you were asking for, it doesn't look like you're asking for relief though, are you?
I'm not.
There's no relief request and there was no denial for the.
Okay, you know, because it's just highlighted on my survey. So I just wanted to.
Highlighted on mine also.
Okay. All right. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Was there anything further from the board? Do we have any speakers on the application?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any speakers. I have the applicant.
Uh, I think at this point we could probably take the motion. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
To grant as a type two action by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Miss, motion carries. Mr. Speck, just apologize to you, to your client for not being able to speak today.
Case number 27. Northfield Construction, care of Sharon O'Brien, 54 Miller Place, Middle Island Road, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the southwest corner, Ethan Lane and Hawkins Avenue, Ronkonkoma. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed one-family dwelling and permission for second floor to exceed the 850 square feet permitted, 1,304 square feet requested.
Mr. Chair, I'm Sharon O'Brien for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. O'Brien, I can see you. Were you able to hear us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Very good. Let's stop and get you sworn if we could.
Thank you. Thank you.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
Yes, I do.
And your appearance for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Sharon O'Brien, 54 Miller Place, Middle Island Road, Mount Sinai, New York.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. You're representing Northfield Construction and you are here for relief for a proposed dwelling. As you are aware, the board's planner reviewed this application. He is here and will take the testimony of Mr. Reed.
Properties located on the southwest corner of Ethan Lane and Hawkins Avenue in the Hamlet, Ronkonkoma. Parcel was formally improved with a residence which has since been removed and a new two-story dwelling is intended for the 11,420 square foot parcel with access to a lot intended via Ethan Lane. It is noted that the underlying zoning is B residence and while the subject parcel is non-conforming with certain bulk requirements of the B zone due to the fact that the parcel was previously improved, zoning enforcement officer determined that the endeavor was exempt from lot area and frontage requirements. The improvement removed on the parcel was oriented toward Hawkins Avenue with the proposed dwelling now intending to front on Ethan Lane. Orienting the dwelling toward Hawkins would require a minor side yard variance for the proposed dwelling. Fronting the home on Ethan Lane now requires a seven-foot rear yard relaxation. In terms of dwelling size, the proposal exceeds second floor code requirement for parcels of this size by 452 square feet. The predominant home style on Hawkins Road are of the high ranch variety with the ones on Ethan Lane predominantly full two-story homes wherein the proposed dwelling would conform. With the application being a type two action and standard residential mitigation is recommended.
All right then, Ms. O'Brien, those are the comments of the board's planner. How did you wish to proceed here?
I will start with my presentation if the board will allow me to. The subject property of vacant parcel with a lot area of 11,420 square feet is situated on the corner of Hawkins Avenue and Ethan Lane in Ronkonkoma. It is located in a B residence zoning district. The property has been determined by the town legal department to be in single and separate ownership. The property was improved with the one-family two-story dwelling, 51 by 31, with a car garage. On October 14th, 1963, the house was CO, CO number 34789. On June 15th, 2019, the town of Brookhaven ordered the dwelling to be demolished. On July 16th, 2019, a certificate of compliance was issued, CC number 312064. We are proposing to construct a one-family, two-story dwelling, 43 by 30, with an attached garage, 11 by 28, which will be set back several feet from the front of the house. The house will also have a front porch and outside cellar entrance. We are proposing to front the house on Ethan Lane for safety reasons because Hawkins Avenue is a very well-traveled road and also because we have more road frontage on Ethan Lane. I submitted an elevation and floor plans of the proposed construction with numerous pictures of the homes on Hawkins Avenue and also Ethan Lane to show that we are in total conformance, excuse me, with the neighborhood. If the board has any questions, I will answer them at this time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I think it might be Mr. Lindsay.
I'm sorry. I thought I had my mic on. Yes, Mr. Chair. Okay, um, hello, hello, how are you today?
Okay, sir, how are you?
Very good. So when did they tear the other house down? And was that torn down by then?
No, sir. It was ordered by the town of Brookhaven and I think the Brookhaven town did the demolition. I'm not sure, but I do know that a permit was taken out by the town. It was demoed and then it was CC'd in July of 2019.
Okay, then I suppose these people bought the lot?
Um.
To rebuild on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And there, are there other houses that size? Or what do the other houses look like in the neighborhood?
I did provide the board with pictures. It would definitely be in conformance with the neighborhood with Hawkins and also on Ethan Lane. The house contiguous to, um, the I think it's the south is a similar house. It's, um, it's a boarded up house. It's a vacant house. I think it was on the first page of the photos that I submitted.
Okay. So, oh, so it was one of those houses that the town came in and condemned and took down in another building, the contractor building a new house on the properties, what you're.
That is correct.
What we'll work with. And it does conform to the neighborhood?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I really don't see any issues with this. It's purchased by the town. It was purchased from the town. I'm sure they knew what was going to happen there. I see the other house with the two-car garage that you showed the picture of.
Yes, sir. And one of the houses on Ethan actually has a three-car garage.
Okay, I, did I have no further questions, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? I know, I believe that we have speakers on the application. Mr. Vega?
Yes, I have a speaker on the gate.
Thank you.
I have a Vincent Nespoli.
Sir, I see that you're being promoted. I just need you to place your video and audio on so we can see and hear you. Okay, we, we have the video and how about now you're able to hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. All right. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, please, to be sworn.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
I do.
All right. So let's start with your name and address.
Uh, my name is Vincent Nespoli, N-E-S-P as in Peter, O-L-I. Uh, I live at 17 Ethan Lane, two houses to the west.
Seventeen, so yes, we see that then there's one parcel separating you from this corner lot. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be done.
All right. I, I see as, as a result of the comments you've been putting up, I see that you have some background for this house. So why don't you go through that background with us and tell us what you want to say.
Yeah, that was a ghost house that I reported, oh, many, many years ago. And eventually the town got around to it and demolished it. It had burned down and then it had been partially renovated. Quite a few unrelated individuals moved in and I think it was a, we think it was a crack house at one point, which may have actually started the fire. But it's gone and that's fine.
All right. But you see the proposal here. So, so the proposal is to redevelop the, the parcel, but instead of the house fronting on Hawkins, the proposal is to reorient it so that it now would front on Ethan. Talk to us about that and your opinion as to.
We would, the property developed, you know, it's been a vacant lot and it's, it's fairly common for people to just kind of use it as a dumping ground. But my question is, is this going to be a single-family home, a multi-family home? Will it be?
The, the request before the board is to construct a single-family home. There's no, there's no request to the board, apart from the fact that, that the house to develop it needs certain variance relief, has nothing to do with how the house will be used, but rather to construct the house. So they need to, because we're reorienting it, it won't meet the rear yard requirements. So the seven feet off there, there's a request for relief for the seven feet and there's permission, there is a request for permission to create the second floor to the footprint, which would bring it to 1,302 square feet where eight, the code would permit 850. So slightly larger second floor, slightly smaller rear yard setback. And that's, that's all the relief that's before us.
Yeah, the only reason I asked the question is that the house opposite it on the other corner of Hawkins is a rental house and there are at least four to five cars that are lined up on Ethan. My concern was having additional cars parked on now the opposite side of Ethan, allowing only one car to pass through. My wife has had several close calls with head-on accidents with people just turning onto Hawkins because of the, the road being so narrow with cars parked on both sides. So my concern was with multi-residents and cars parked along Ethan, making it even more narrow to get through.
Your concern is the use of the dwelling once it's constructed?
Yeah, the number of cars that it might have parked on the street.
I understand the comment, obviously, and you recognize that that's not an issue before us. Certainly, certainly you and your wife should continue to be vigilant and if you are seeing something that you believe to be a, a violation of the code, you should report that to code enforcement.
But we would welcome to see a house on the property. It's better than a vacant lot.
Yes, I agree. I would agree with you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If not, Ms. O'Brien, did you have anything further?
No, sir, I do not.
Does the board have a motion?
Uh, yes, for sure. I'd like to grant the application type two as presented.
That would be with standard residential minute, standard residential mitigation measures, motion by Mr. Lindsay. I think I heard Mr. Lazarus seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 28, William and Andrea Smith, 16 Julia Circle, East of Tocket. Located on the south side of Julia Circle, 650 feet west of Hulse Road, East of Tocket. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have a Dieter Speck for the applicant.
Thank you.
I also have the applicant.
Thank you. So Mr. Speck, I see you're back. You're not, you, you look to be muted. I do see that we've renamed you so that you have the proper name. There you go. So you previously been sworn. Just give us your appearance for the record.
Dieter Speck for the applicant, office address 265 Brookfield Avenue, Center Riches.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
Well, when we originally went to contract with the client, our client and myself were under the impression that they had a tremendously larger piece of property than they do. After the survey was done, we realized that they don't. And quite a bit of their yard is what they thought was their yard is not, the rear part of the yard, which is owned by the town of Brookhaven. My client spoke to both their side neighbors and they don't have any concern about the pool. The survey that's up is not the survey of this property. There we go. And so really, there's really no good place to put the pool with, without a variance off the rear property line. And that's why we're here before you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Speck. Before I give it to the board, I want to go back to the last application that you had before us. I'm moving to go back into it. Just, this is informal. We failed to, to, to pull up and read an email that we, we got on that application. We're in the rear neighbor requested in conjunction with our consideration of that application that the fence between the two properties that's apparently owned by that applicant be repaired. There's, it's, it's in some sort of disrepair. So I am relating that to you so that you could do us a favor and relate that to the applicant and we expect that that issue to be resolved. All right then. Well, with regard to this application, does, who, does the board have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazarus.
Yes. The realization that they had less property is that's the dotted lines that we see to the south.
That's correct. Yes, that's what they thought was, that's what, when they moved into the property, that's what was cleared. They had a chain link fence that will be removed and restored to, you know, it's a natural, natural.
Okay. Additional fencing would just be along the south side or the rear of the property.
There'll be a new fence put up, so it's all to code and put, you know, on the property line and staked by a surveyor before, you know.
Okay, the existing side fences that will, will encompass the pool, those are all existing fence.
Um, I'd have to confirm whether it's existing or they can replace it. But it will be to code and it will be our client's fence regardless.
All right. I, I'm, I'm just going to ask, Anthony, can we go into the aerial? Okay, this is lot sixteen and lot fourteen. Is that a pool in the backyard of lot fourteen?
I was looking on, I was looking and I couldn't tell. It looks like it. I did find an address that I, that I know is on that block, which is at forty-three Julia Circle, which does have a pool close to the property line. It's a side property line, not a rear property line, but if you look at house number forty-three, and I get, I don't know, yeah, forty-three.
Yeah. There's, there's another pool there. But I was just concerned because the, in such close proximity with sharing the side yards, there is a pool there. It looks like it's quite close to the fence. And this one, the amoeba shape that it is, um, it encroaches on the rear yard to the point where you only have an eight-foot setback. And I don't know if there's any room for improvement of improving the, the depth of that side of the rear yard. Um, and so not unless you, you have any volunteers, you can volunteer any, any way of making that a little bit better to be more in conformance, but that's, I won't ask the question. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yeah, grant the application type two.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number twenty-nine, Carrot Chopin Realty, Inc., care of Rowan Permit Expediting. Eighty Wedgwood Drive, Corham. Property is located on the southwest corner, Riviera Drive and Huntington Drive. Eastside Laurelton Drive, Mastic Beach. Applicant request front yard setback variance from Huntington Drive. For proposed wraparound deck, also rear yard variance for proposed second-story deck with steps.
Mr. Chair, I have Michael Strauss for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Strauss, I see that you're being promoted. You need to put your video. I see. Okay, you're progressing. There you go. Very good. We can see you. Yes, of course. Let's start with your appearance, please.
Michael Strauss, nine oh seven Main Street, Port Jefferson, for the applicant, who's the owner of the property.
Thank you, sir. What comment did you have for us here?
So this is a situation where there was a fire years ago and the house burned down and it was a rebuild. It was a lengthy process with wetlands approvals, DEC approvals and so on. And the CO for the previously existing house is extremely hard to read. And in analyzing it all, the building department couldn't confirm that decks and porches were actually on the prior structure. I've submitted some surveys from the past that do show the decking. I've also given you the printout from the assessor's office that shows decking was there. In any event, there's a practical difficulty with three road frontages. Decks and porches conform to this area of Mastic Beach probably as much as any area I've ever seen in the town of Brookhaven. I've submitted a couple of pictures, but I could have spent the entire afternoon taking pictures of houses with second story and wraparound porches and decks. This house is well set back from any of the other houses in the area. It fits in beautifully. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Let's start with board members' questions.
I'm Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burson.
So, Michael, the wraparound deck is, what level is it? Second floor or the first floor?
The wraparound deck is first floor and then the porch is off the back and that's with the stairs to it. That's the second story.
Okay, the second story is only that small piece that's by the steps in the rear yard?
That's correct. It's a little hard to see and read. I agree with you, the way it was laid over. The wraparound is the ground floor deck and the second floor is just off the back.
Okay, so the, the wraparound deck that's in the side yard is, is gonna, as proposed, will hold what the distance on the side yard?
I believe it's forty-one feet, but it's, it's technically a front yard, I'm sure, because.
No, well, I understand. Well, it's a front yard to Huntington.
Right.
Huntington Drive. So from the deck, the proposed deck to the property line is going to be, is going to be what distance?
It appears to be forty-one feet.
Okay, so that's a substantial, whether you call it a side yard or front yard, it's still substantial. There's no, other than the small deck and the steps, there's no requirement for the rear yard, for rear yard variance. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding is that.
Because it's a second story, that's why.
Right, exactly. And in fact, if you look towards Huntington Drive, you, it just goes forever. In the beginning of the water there, there's just really nothing there in that direction.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve the application submitted type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Burson, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Case number thirty, estate of Adelphi Paper, care of Woodhull Expediting, ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the east side of Tree Road, sixty-seven feet south of Norman Drive Center each. Applicant requests front yard setback and minimum and total side yard variances for existing garage addition. Also permission for existing conversion of said garage to habitable space.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Thank you, Amy. We can see you already. Good afternoon. Let me ask you to give your attention to John Doyle so we can get you sworn.
I do.
Very good. Let's start with your appearance, please.
Amy DeVito, Woodhull Expediting, with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my client Valerie Hamilton is the executrix of her mother's estate. Her mother passed away this past September. As such, they are working on legalizing some outstanding items from the past. We have a carport that was originally certified on the original CO. That was converted to a garage and added on to back in sometime between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty. Her mother or her parents, rather, purchased the house in nineteen sixty-one. So this occurred actually prior to their purchase. The house is certified as of nineteen fifty-five. The garage was then later converted to living space in two thousand and four. The interior of the garage is just for, it's just a den. I did submit photos of the interior and a floor plan so that the board could see. We are proposing in our construction drawings to remove the garage door. So you'll see that there is still a garage door that actually is just a false facade. That will be removed as part of the permit application process. We did find some similar grants in the neighborhood, and if you look at the aerials, you'll see that all of the lots in this neighborhood are generally just under a quarter of an acre, all of similar width, if not exact. And this does not appear to be uncommon for the neighborhood as far as garage conversions and encroachments onto these non-conforming lots. And also, it should be noted that there is no further encroachment into the side yard or the front yard with the garage and then garage conversion than what was originally certified in nineteen fifty-five when the carport was built. And I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. DeVito. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Might be Mr. Mizavella.
Okay. So, how are you, Amy?
Good. How are you, Mr. Mizavella?
Very well, thank you. You had just mentioned the carport from back in the fifties. And I'm just wondering, does that include that carport? Does the depth of that carport include the addition on to this garage towards the back? Or are you just referring to the original garage area?
The original garage area, or I should say the original carport area, is what you see today as far as footprint from the front of the house, which encroaches into the front yard. When the carport was converted to a garage, there was a rear addition added, which is about seven feet by ten feet to the back of the garage. Which does not encroach into the rear yard setback. It's within the established rear yard setback of the existing house.
Yes, I see that. Okay, that was my only question. And that, those were done simultaneously in two thousand and four? Extension and, and conversion?
No, the garage was the carport, sorry. The carport was converted to a garage with the extension sometime between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty. It was basically done right after the home was built. My clients purchased in nineteen sixty-one. It had already existed that way. It was then converted to living space, the entire piece that you see on the screen right now in two thousand and four.
I got you. Okay, thank you for that. And, and, and so, and that conversion from two thousand and four has remained the same and the same usage up till today.
That's correct.
Right. And, and you are just, you're filing plans in order to create a regular facade and get rid of that garage door, is that?
Yes, we're, we're legalizing the garage conversion and actually the rear deck as well. And the small addition on the back of the garage previously discussed. And as part of our building permit application and as part of the plans, we are proposing to remove the garage door as it is required because it's not to fire code. You can't have the, you know, false garage door.
Right. So what will be on the facade? Be a window or a door or what is that going to look like?
Right now, we're just proposing siding. Right now, we're just proposing siding. I'm going to discuss it a little further with my client once we get through this step. If the board sees fit to grant the application to, just to finalize the plans for submission to the building department.
I got you. Okay. All right, as, does any comments or written questions? Otherwise, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizavella. Is there any speakers? Or do we have any communication?
I have no speakers, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, like to grant the application now submitted type two.
I heard motion is by Mr. Mizavella, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number thirty-two, Sean and Alexandra Higgins, care of Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the south side of Rack Lane, five hundred and nine feet east of Fireside Lane, East of Tocket. Applicant request front yard setback variance for proposed one-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Andrew, it looks like you are with us already. If you could give your attention to the board's attorney, we'll have you sworn.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's start with your appearance.
Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
All right, what I have here is a front yard setback request for a small first story addition. This said addition will consist of expand the kitchen, which is, which is essentially a galley kitchen at this point, more or less. And just looking to expand upon it, the front yard setbacks are completely in line with the surrounding neighborhood. Next door neighbor has even a closer setback than we're, we're asking for. And multiple others on one rack, eight rack, twenty-four rack, all have closer setbacks than we are proposing. Falls in line, only enhances the, you know, character of the neighborhood. And if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. The roof over with the, with the, I mean, the porch with the roof over did not require a variance. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. It's holding thirty-one feet, so it's, it's in line.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Maglaner, um, looking at the plan, was this built by the homeowner or was it done by a contractor?
It's proposed still, so it hasn't been done yet. And the kitchen's on that side of the house. That's why it's in the, the front as opposed to the rear.
And you got the roof over going all the way to the side of the house where the concrete and the gate show.
In the middle, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, does this add a character with the neighborhood? I doubt it.
No, it's, it's in line completely.
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make motion to grant the application type two.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lazarus. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number thirty-three, Kurt and Alex Seabert, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the southwest corner, Hollow Road and Forsyth Meadow Lane, Stony Brook. Applicant request front yard setback variance for existing in-ground swimming pool located in the front yard, Hollow Road.
Can we have the aerial showing us on this one? And Andrew, you are still with us. You've been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for this application.
Yes, Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Very good. We see that this is a parcel with multiple front yards. What would you like to tell us specifically about the request for the pool?
Yes, absolutely. It's basically a peninsula of, you know, surrounded by, by, by roads every which way. Needed a forty-foot setback. It's at thirty-seven point six, so it's not, it's not drastic. There is a four-foot fence around, not a six. My client actually purchased the house with the pool already there. He did not realize the issue with, he had with it. And here we are. He's looking to rectify everything. And if the board has any questions, please let me know.
I, I don't. I can actually, you can, we can see the pool in the aerial that we're, that's in front of us now. Is that, is that right? Okay.
Right.
I don't have any questions. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Motion to grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by, I'm sorry. I'll take Mr. Burson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Case number thirty-four, Mary Ann McCray, care of Andrew Malguanera. Properties located on the west side of Ontario Street, one seventy-five feet south of Clinton Avenue, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant request rear yard variance for existing screen porch.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Andrew, your appearance again, please.
Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. And with regard to this application, what did you have for us?
So what we have here is existing screen porch, asking for a rear at setback. It's existed at least ten years now. Has no adverse effects. It falls in line with the area of, of, of Port Jefferson. One oh eight Clinton, one oh one Clinton have closer setbacks with the house itself. This is just a screen porch. It's not living space. And again, has no adverse effects. If the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Andrew, how are you?
How you doing?
I'm good. I'm good. Anthony, can you bring back the aerial, if you don't mind? So you're saying it's just a screen porch, no heat?
Correct.
Okay, no cooling, obviously. Any plumbing whatsoever? No?
No.
Okay, so might have some electrical?
Yes, yes, it has some electric.
Okay, you said other houses are closer. Which ones did you say were closer?
One oh one.
One oh one, the corner lot on Clinton. And one oh eight, right, two houses down on Clinton. Both the houses themselves are actually closer than than our porch.
Okay, I see what you're saying. And the screened-in porch is basically only going to be about six feet into the rear yard as compared to the house. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Seven and a half, more or less?
Correct.
All right. And it's only to be used seasonally?
Yes, unless you want to be cold and hang out.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kuniya. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuniya, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number thirty-five, Joseph Kalise, twenty-one Woodville Road, Middle Island. Properties located on the east side of Woodville Road, five hundred feet north of Short Street, Middle Island. Applicant request, side yard and height variances for proposed twenty-one point one foot high. Six hundred and seventy-six square foot detached garage. Also, side yard and rear yard variances for existing detached shed.
Mr. Chair, I have Larry Buscemi for the applicant.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. Can you guys hear me?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm actually just trying to find you. There you go, Larry. Yes, please, if you can give your attention to the board's attorney, we'll have you sworn.
Yes, I'm just going to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good. Your appearance for the record, please.
Larry Buscemi, agent for the homeowner, fifteen Vineyard Way, Mount Sinai, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Buscemi. What would you like to tell us?
We have multiple variances we're requesting this evening. For an existing structure and a proposed structure. The existing structure is a shed. That's about a hundred and sixty, excuse me, a hundred and eighty-seven square feet. And has side yard setbacks of three, three and a half feet and a rear yard of six and a half feet, where ten is required. The structure's been there quite a while, has never received any complaints. It's in character and keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And is an attractive structure. Now, if we go back to the aerial. You'll see that the side, the proposed garage and the shed are on the southeast corner. Now, that is bordered on the south by woods, which is public land, and by the east, which is woods, which is public land. Now, the proposed structure is a detached garage, which is slightly over in size, six hundred and seventy square, seventy-six square feet instead of six hundred square feet. Which I believe is a de minimis change in size. And it is somewhat higher than is usually. Accepted by this board. It's twenty-one feet where fourteen is required. However, if you see where it's going to be, it'll never be an impairment to any neighbor. Because it won't be visible from the street. It won't be visible from the neighbor to the north. And the rest of it's just woods. So we ask that the board consider these two requests. And if there are any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lindsay.
So, I'm looking on here. Is Short Street a paper road?
I believe so.
Okay, so, and who owns it probably behind? He says, does a town own it?
That's my understanding.
That's your understanding. It's owned by the town. Did you look into it in an understanding, or do you know for sure?
I, I mean, if I look at the survey, the survey says it belongs to. Someone else, Schultz or something. However, my, my client tells me that it's all part of the town right away.
Okay.
So George Spohr.
That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, I can't confirm for sure that that's, but it's undeveloped land, this land not likely to be developed. It's been like that. Obviously, since the beginning.
Okay, my thing is, Short Street is a paper road. I don't know, like, so we don't know. It says now or formerly owned by. If he decides to build, you're looking at it. A twenty-one-foot shed, twenty-one-foot shed. And what is the need for a twenty-one-foot shed?
Well, the homeowner is a, is a car buff, and he needs to put a lift for his engines. And apparently, the architect designed that that was, that was the only way to put the lift in the proper spot, so that it could lift the engine out of, out of the car and out of harm's way.
So he needs twenty-one feet for that?
Right. Well, I mean, obviously, the interior size will be smaller. But with the roof peak being the way it is. You know, with the, with the required twelve-to-one ratio, it just added up to that.
Okay, so the average car lift is about thirteen feet off the ground. I just saw the printed stall one in a. Commercial garage. And I don't know, understand the reason for twenty-one feet. It's, if he's putting up. It's gonna be like a missile launch thing there. You know what I mean?
No, don't you say. I mean, he could, I spoke to him, and I think the architect told him the minimum he could go. This was just the most aesthetically pleasing plan. The minimum he could go and have the lift properly installed would be like nineteen-six. So we would be willing to, you know, amend the application to that.
To nineteen-six? I, I would like to see, at least see something saying that he needs that for a lift. Can you show me another garage in the neighborhood that's twenty-one feet high?
No, there's no precedent in the neighborhood.
That we have granted?
No, there's no precedent that you've granted.
Yeah.
There are obviously structures. There are a lot of structures that you haven't granted that are, that are high like that, but. There's no, as far as I'm, I know, I couldn't find any precedent.
Okay, I, I feel we would be setting a precedent. Do you have, I would love to not have it that high. I'm not gonna lie to you. Nineteen-six isn't. That much either off of twenty-one. You know what I mean? You're only talking a foot and a half.
Well, now we're below twenty feet. Mr. Lindsay, is there, is there a height that would be comfortable for you?
Not just me, we're a whole board.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Is there, has the board, is there a rule of thumb?
Is, yeah, Larry, I know that's, I guess that's a way of going about it. We're going to decide the application on the, on what you're presenting. So it will be the, it will be what's proposed.
All right.
Chair, I have the applicant. If you'd like.
Did you want, did you want us to hear from the applicant?
If they would like to speak on it.
I have no indication they want to speak. I just wanted to inform you that the applicant is.
Thank you. Could you?
I was aware.
You send the applicant a message, Anthony, and then let's find out.
And what do they, a pool? They have a pool there too, that the garage is going to be infringing on, correct?
Well, what do you mean by, no, there's no pool.
It looks like on the survey.
I'm looking right at the survey. I don't see a pool.
On the picture I'm showing, that he was showing us, not on the survey, on the picture. We zoom in on that, please?
Yeah, that, that structure is gone.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't, I just, would they be willing to go like eighteen?
I, you know, they'd be willing to go whatever the board, in its good graces, would be willing to grant.
Okay, Larry, what you were telling me was they need that height for, for a lift.
Right.
So I, I don't, I don't. I don't believe that they need twenty-one feet for a lift. You go in, auto shop, you can see they don't need that height.
Right.
I would like to propose eighteen.
I would be willing to amend the application orally to eighteen feet.
Mr. Chair, I believe I also have a speaker on this case.
There are a lot of speakers, and we are actually negotiating heights, so that the people that want to speak don't, don't even know what. What height they're going to be speaking about when they come up. So I've heard, Mr. Buscemi, that you want to amend to eighteen feet high. I'll allow you to do that if the board has the motion.
Don't move.
Motion in second. Have them made all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lindsay, was there anything further? Just trying to get through one at a time.
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Buscemi, you said there was no board precedent or, or other existing structures at twenty-one feet. And change as originally proposed. Would the same answers be true at the eighteen-foot high level?
Uh, I would, yes, I believe so.
And when, in, after now looking at your survey and seeing that the land surrounding this parcel is privately owned. Do, would you agree that this is, that is potentially developable land?
It seems, I mean, the paper road would have to be developed, and it seems landlocked.
The paper road is five hundred feet away. That's according to the survey.
Right.
But in, in terms of, I mean, it's, this certainly is surrounded by undeveloped land, but this is land that's privately owned and could be developed any day.
That is true, it would appear.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kuniya.
I just checked on the Suffolk County GIS. The actual land is owned by the town of Brookhaven.
Okay, very good.
All right, well, there you go.
Just for the, keep the record clean.
So my client was correct.
All right, so let's hear from the speakers then. Mr. Vega, if you could bring them all up, please.
Sure, I don't know, want me to bring the client?
I'll ask him if he wants to speak. If you want, do you want to bring up one of the other speakers?
I'll bring the other speaker up. I had asked him on chat if he'd like to speak, but I have no response.
Yeah, I'm asking him now. And I'm not getting any answer either.
All right, so Anthony, there is someone there. You're not sure whether to bring them up?
Somebody named Gregory.
Why don't you just bring them up? I will ask.
They're up, but they're just not unmuting or.
Oh, okay. The individual name Gregory with the number thirty-five next to your name as the application that you want to speak on. I think that you've been. Using the Q and A and chat functions of the. Of the Zoom platform, but if you wish to speak on this application, you will need to unmute yourself and put your video on. While we're waiting, Mr. Buscemi, this is, is this still a one-story house at this parcel?
Yes.
Where's the height of the house?
So around sixteen feet.
So then the garage would be higher than the house?
Well, at eighteen, I mean, there's also chimneys or whatever, so, yeah, at eighteen feet.
I'm talking roof lines, roof lines.
Right.
It would be higher.
It would be. He said the owner is trying to call in. Is there a number? That's not how it works. So can we hear from Gregory?
Gregory's not wishing to talk to us or any.
I have somebody here named Rosemary Kalise.
That's, that's the, one of the homeowners.
Right, would you like me to promote them so they can speak?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, this Gregory person is not responding.
Thank you. Rosemaria, it looks as though you have unmuted yourself, but I need you to put your video on. All right, Mr. Buscemi, we, we aren't getting anyone else to speak on the application. If you'd like, I can hold it for a hearing or two and come back to it. Or I could close it where it is.
I, I think we, they're, they're saying they're trying. Is there?
Well, can I ask you to ask them what they would like to tell us? Because I will take it through you if you'd like.
All right, you know, I'm just gonna call them. And then maybe I could put them on speaker.
Very good.
But it seems like they can speak.
But there's no video. Hey, Joe, they.
I know, it's not working.
It's not working.
I'm trying to get voice. I only have the video. I can hear you guys and see you guys, but, oh, maybe, maybe, can I get you now, Larry?
Okay, all right. No, we can't see you, but we can hear, they can hear you on the phone right now. All right, so what is it you wanted to add, Joe?
Chairman?
John, I'm aware that this person is not sworn. I am willing to listen to the conversation. There's not a lot we can do about it. If you, if you go and try to swear them, we don't know who you're swearing in because we don't see them and we don't recognize the voice. So I don't think that helps us.
Understood.
All right, you want me, want me to swear that I'm speaking to the client?
Now, at this point, I'd like to hear what Ms. Kalisi has to say.
All right, Joe, they want to hear what you have to say.
Basically, board, what I'm, what I'm looking to do is, is the reason why I was drawn up a twenty-one foot six. Is because I was looking to have fourteen feet of clearance inside the structure, so that I'd be able to raise a car on the lift. And potentially, if I had to work underneath that car and not have ceiling restraints. And also needing, knowing that the garage door needs to have access, you know, a foot hang down, a foot down from the ceiling. That would give me the thirteen feet that I believe was being said that you need for a lift. I totally agree with that. I was looking to have that clearance on the inside of the structure. And that's why I guess the peak ended up being twenty-one foot six. So really, what we were looking to do was get the inside of the structure. And then Short Street. The speak on Short Street is actually at the entrance for the condominiums. For the development for the condominiums. I don't know what a paper road is, but that's a access to the development for the condominiums over here. Off of Woodville Road. And then, like you guys said, the land behind me and to the right of me is Fort Haven Land.
Did you get all that, guys?
Yes, thank you, Larry. So I, I understand it was explained at least to all of us why the height, which you explained previously. And what the, what the Short Street is utilized for.
It's, it's paper on one side and across the street, it's the entrance to the condos.
Obviously, you, you're aware that at twenty-one feet, the request for height. Was five hundred percent over the code requirement. And even at eighteen percent, you're dealing with a significant height in excess of the code requirement. I believe that's why some people use pits to work on vehicles inside of a garage, as opposed to setting them up into the air. But is there anything you wanted to say before we, before I ask the board for a motion?
No, we'll rest on that.
Excellent. Was there anything further from any board member? All right, then, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application on the amended height of eighteen feet type two action.
Okay, a motion is by Mr. Lindsay to grant. At eighteen feet. Mr. Lindsay, there's, there's, it's, it's commonplace for the board to impose a garage covenant on an excessively high garage. This is your motion. Did you intend to include that covenant?
Yes, I do. Do I need to read the covenant?
No, no, that, it's, your motion is to grant as a type-two action. At the amended application at eighteen feet high with a garage covenant. That motion is by Mr. Lindsay. Is there a second? Motion I'll take by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Let the record reflect that the chair is opposed and motion carries six in favor with one opposed. Thank you.
Yeah, have a great night.
Case number thirty-six, Thomas Cozine, thirty-seven Pine Edge Drive, East Marriages. Located on the east side of Pine Edge Drive, one hundred and twenty-six feet south of Diane Lane, East Marriages. Applicant request, side yard variance for existing hot tub.
Mr. Chair, I have the applicant, Thomas Cozine.
Thank you. Mr. Cozine, very good. Can you hear us, sir?
Yes, I can.
I understand you're busy. We'll, we'll get you through the process as quickly as we can. If you can just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
I just, Thomas Cozine, thirty-seven Pine Edge Drive, East Marriages.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you've given us your name and address. Tell us about the relief you're requesting here.
If you don't mind, my wife is handling the whole process. She's gonna step up. I have to grab the baby.
All right, very good, sir.
That's okay. Thank you. Wear me in too?
Yes, right hand up, please.
I do.
All right, then, your name and address, please.
Lisa Cozine, thirty-seven Pine Edge Drive, East Marriages, New York, one one nine four zero.
So, thank you, ma'am. And you are here for a side yard setback for a hot tub?
We are.
Nine point six feet?
Yes.
You want to tell us anything about that?
Honestly, it was misinformation. We thought it was a ten-foot setback. We placed it in place with this entire project we did. And not realizing it was a fifteen. There's no noise disturbance. The neighbors are fine with it. We're hoping it's not a big deal where it is. It's gonna be a really big. Bill to try and move it. We've looked around. There's really no other options. So where, where it is, is hopefully where it can stay, if you will allow it.
Thank you for those comments. Is there questions or comments from the board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazaru.
Is, is this existing and is, is in place?
Yes, it is.
It is, right. Anthony, can I see the aerial? Thank you. Uh, okay. Are, to the best of your knowledge, is there anyone else who has a hot tub similar to that and has close proximity? Where are they?
Lot thirty-nine. It will be southwest of the property. So if you're looking at the home, water side top, basically in the same spot ours is in, theirs is as well.
I see. And this is the one next door?
Yes, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Any, anyone else?
Um, who else has a hot tub, honey?
The Wolf's.
The Wolf's do is what, that's what I'm talking about. Anybody else?
I don't know.
Okay, so you're, you're both in the same proximity, you're next door to each other, and there's no searching for the rest of the neighborhood. I'm sure your next door neighbor is not going to object, but any of your other neighbor, neighbors have said anything with regards to this hot tub being?
Not at all, not at all. We're actually all very close. It's a wonderful community. Everyone's aware of this and we actually got texts all day saying, good luck.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Was there anything further from the board? Do you think we can hear from your baby?
My baby.
Does the board, does the board have a motion?
Grant the application type two.
Thank you.
Are we subject to any, anything with regard to the code? It is waterfront. Motion is by Mr. Lazarus. I'm sorry, who made the second?
I did.
Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case number thirty-eight, Rosalie and Alex Hanson to Caroline Street, Medford, located on the southwest corner, Granny Road and Caroline Street, Medford. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing enclosed porch sunroom.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Moje for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, recuse.
The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's recused from the application. I think we have Diane up, but I don't, she's not in the frame. Oh, no, she is. Diane, can you hear us?
I can.
Good to see you. I'm good. Let me ask you to give your attention to Mr. Doyle to be sworn.
Raise your right hand.
Can you see me?
Yes.
I, I was already sworn.
That's right, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't here when that occurred.
Long time ago.
I know.
Yeah, that's right.
I stepped away for that hearing. So just your appearance for the record, please.
Diane Moje, DNI Expediting Services, located at seven seven nine Horse Black Road in Farmingville.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us about this application?
This is a prior grant. This was previously granted. Unfortunately, the permit was never obtained. Were before the board seeking permission to legalize an existing screen-in room, like a sunroom. I've submitted some photographs. The house is very small. It was previously granted. The granting of this would not create any detriment to the surrounding area. And if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
The chairman, since this was a previous grant, they're holding, still holding a twenty-three foot setback from the rear yard. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Move to approve the application is submitted type two.
Back.
A motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number forty-one, Ben and Heidi Ego, care of building permits plus nineteen Stillwood Road, Brookhaven, located on the northeast corner, Montauk Avenue and Atlantic Avenue, East Marriages. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed conversion of detached garage to pool house.
Mr. Chair, Jason Allen for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also have the applicant.
Just bear with us a moment. All right, sorry about that. Mr. Allen, do we have you?
Yes.
Okay, I could, I should know that because I'm used to the birds.
I think Lisa's also looking in.
All right, very good. I suspect that you're going to present, so I'm gonna ask you to give your attention to Mr. Doyle. We'll have you sworn.
Raise your right hand. So I'm just going to tell the truth, the whole truth.
So help me God.
Very good, sir. And your appearance for the record.
Jason Allen, building permits plus Brookhaven, New York.
Thank you. And what would you like to tell us here?
Okay. This house porch detached garage was built approximately nineteen twenty and it was issued a CEU thirty-two twenty-eight eighty-two on January twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. The attached shed was built afterwards, but it predates and was applicable for a CEU. The inspector who came out said that the shed would never pass. So what we did is we removed it. He determined that based upon a personal inspection. We then applied to HDAC and everything was approved by HDAC. But we're doing this job because the owner, the new owner, wants to move in as soon as possible. He's now renting a home in the area. So we did, decided to do it in a three-part. First permit was twenty B thirteen sixty-four fifty-six was issued to completely renovate the house, which is currently being renovated, complete. There's a permit pending for the screen porch in the back in the rear. It does not need a variance. This is the third part of the project, which will also include a in-ground pool, hot tub and generator. I have included the pictures that we presented to the HDAC and the house comes out looking just about like that. Property was purchased in two thousand twenty as well as the approved renderings are shown. And just to, just to finish it up, there's, this was an improvement in the the neighborhood. I'm sure that other houses will follow in this area. It's prime property. And this house was done because of the HDAC and everything else in the historic character of what it originally was. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. The, certainly it looks like a nice development of the parcel. And this is a, is the structure proposed or did you get a CEU for the deep, for the garage and then you're moving from that?
Right, we got a CEU for the garage and an attached shed. The attached shed was removed and the garage stays and we've decided that the best use, best and highest use for this would be as a pool house.
Okay, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
How are you, Jason?
Pretty good. Got my covert virus shot, so one of them.
For you.
Thank you.
That second one when you're ready.
Okay.
When they're ready. Anyway, I would agree with the chairman. It looks like a very nice, you know, development of, you know, old to new, but still looking old. It's, you know, done very nicely in character with the original structure. If you could just, obviously, we're here for the pool house and nothing else. Appreciate all the background on everything else. It helps us to absorb the whole project. But just talk a little bit about the conversion of that pool house. Was it a true conversion? I, I thought I heard you say something about a knockdown. I know there was an attached shed. So if you could just, please review that.
Okay, there was an attached shed and when Inspector Harding came out and looked at it, he said that the shed would, it would be impossible for it to pass inspection unless we actually did tear it down and built a new one, which then wouldn't qualify for the CEU. The garage is in good condition, except for that part of one wall that was attached to the shed. That's being updated as we speak so that it won't fall down and won't be porous. But the garage will remain the same exact size. There's no addition to the garage. There's no change of the roof line or anything. The difference is, is that instead of having garage doors, it will have, I guess, sliders and windows.
All right, I'm looking at that now on the rendering as far as in the windows. Can you talk to me a little bit about utilities? Is there going to be a change from, if any, were in the garage to, to what the utilities will be now?
Well, the garage always had electric, so for, as far as we know. The, the difference is gonna be that, and it also had water. So we're gonna keep the water. We're gonna keep the electric. We'd like to place air conditioning in there so that if the parents of the small children that are gonna be there wanna just sit inside to cool off while the kids are swimming around, it's not gonna be too hot because you know the summer's here, they do get hot. And that's, that's basically it. There'll be a changing room and, oh, wait a second, and very important, there will be a bathroom. And we now have in front of the health department with an AI system that will handle the bathroom and all of the waste from the house.
Okay, and I guess my final question would be, so you just explained and articulated very well the utilization of it. Just wanted to ask you on the record, it will, it will not be used as an extra home and/or apartment and the like?
No, we're about twenty miles west of what's permitted for an extra house.
So no, 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 no permanent living area, just, just, you know, pretty much a seasonal use for the pool?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Allen, are you familiar with the conditions of the pool house covenant that the board issues?
Not exactly, but I'm sure we can abide by that.
All right, all right, very good.
Just wanted that air conditioning for the, for the hot summer days if the parents want to sit inside and the kids are swimming.
Was there anything further from the board on the application? If we have no speakers, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application, including the covenants that are normally placed on the pool house.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number forty-three, excuse me, Julio Guzman, care of building permits plus properties located on the east side of Duckie Lane, one hundred feet south of Cedar Road, Mystic Beach. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing woodwalk on top of bulkhead, five foot wide permitted, zero feet existing.
Mr. Chair, Jason Allen for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, you, I see you're still here. You've previously been sworn. We'll take your appearance again for this record, please.
Jason Allen, building permits plus for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. What would you like to tell us here? It looks like it's only a piece of that wood deck in the corner of the parcel. Is that right?
Part of the deck. It gets wider in the, in that one area. That's where they pulled out the, the jet skis that they had. And it's, it's a good repair. Some of it had been, a couple of new slats were put in. As you can see, the deck was not refurbished completely. This deck has been there over twenty years. But it was never permitted. So we're here so that we can get the permit for it and make everything legal on the property.
All right, and Mr. Allen, you saw, I just took off my headpiece just for that one moment. I didn't hear everything. You referenced, you want to legalize the, that piece of woodwalk on the bulkhead, correct?
Correct.
All right, that, the town records do indicate a complaint number and a requirement that a plumbing permit be taken out for some second, for the second floor of the home. Are you familiar with that?
No, but I am now. We'll do that. That's.
All right. So, so let me ask the board, are there any questions on the relief requested here? Mr. Wisdom, I believe that would go with to you.
Mr. Chair, I have, I've, I've seen this doc myself personally a few times. It's been there for quite a while. I can back up Mr. Allen's testimony. But, but it's been there quite a while. It's, it's Pata Squash, Pata Squash Creek. And there are, you know, there are a few other homes, I believe, that might have something similar to these. I had, they have floating platforms also. So they could dock their boats.
All right, then no, no questions?
No, 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 I have no questions.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board?
There are, there are other houses in that area that, that do have docks similar, very similar to this.
And this house is on the water? Is it subject to any specific portion of the code?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, we've already applied for wetlands permit for this.
Thank you.
Craig Strong is working on that and I don't see a problem with it.
All right, so the, the application is subject to chapter eighty-one. The complaint reference was two zero zero three zero one zero three eight. Plumbing permit needed, and I believe it was for second story. I'll ask the board for a motion now. I think that we should grant the application such as a type two action subject to chapter eighty-one of the code and resolution of the complaint noted. That motion is made and seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too.
Case number forty-four, Joel and Patricia Frimmer, Irrevocable Trust, care of Christine Nicole, eighteen Railroad Avenue, Center Marriages. Properties located on the north side of Morton Street, eighty-five feet west of Miller Avenue, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for proposed one-story residence addition.
Thank you.
Christine, I think we can hear you, but your video hasn't come up yet.
All right, well, I can talk anyway. Wait a minute, let me see if I can. Okay, does that help?
That, that's perfect. Now we can see you and hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's have you sworn if we could, please.
So I'm just going to tell the truth, the whole truth, none but truth.
I do.
Thank you. Your appearance for the record.
Christine Nicole with offices at eighteen Railroad Avenue and Center Marriages. I'm here, I'm here to represent the applicant. The Frimmer property is located in Port Jeff Station. It's ninety by one hundred. It is improved with a two-story dwelling and swimming pool. A variance was granted for the shed that is in the side yard, which will be moved on eleven, January eleventh, two thousand seventeen. The Frimmers have lived here for forty-four years and don't want to move. So we're proposing to add an eighteen by twenty-one story addition to the west side of the house. It will be used as a rehab area and sleeping area for Mr. Frimmer, who has difficulty using his stairs to go to the bedroom. All the bedrooms are upstairs. He has had two hip replacements in the past few years and being a senior, he has not recovered as quickly as he thought. This requires a minimum side yard of eight feet and a total of thirty-two point four. The house next door has a side yard, existing side yard right now of twenty-six six. And there was also a legal shed in that side yard. So this addition will face that shed. And there's also an attached garage on that side of the neighbor's home. My client spoke with his neighbors, number sixty-seven, sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
Christine, can I stop you there? Can I stop you there? Mr. Vega, can you pull up the aerial for us, please? Yes, go ahead. Continue.
Okay, and all were okay according to my client. Opposite the subject premises at number sixty-six, a variance for a seven-foot side yard was granted on three nineteen eighty. Also, at sixty-nine Climber Street, a variance was granted in the nineteen eighties for a tight side yard. I wasn't able to get the setback, but it looks like it's about six or seven feet. The area is mostly older homes. Most of the homes are built in the sixties and seventies. And we feel that the granting of this variance will not change the character of the area. And we feel that the granting of this variance will not change the character of the area. I would like to say we tried everything to avoid having to put put it there. We were going to try to, you know, utilize the garage, but the garage has all the utilities in it. It has the oil burner. It has the hot water heater. It has the oil tank. And it's also used as storage because the house has no basement. So this is really the only place we can put it, and he really needs it because he cannot go up the stairs anymore longer. The board has any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Vega, tighter on the aerial, please. And could you also include? Yes.
Look at number sixty-six.
All right, then that's why that's why.
Yes.
That's why I had him do that in terms of the precedent for an eight-foot side yard in this in this neighborhood. Talk to us again about that.
Well, again, these are older homes. People have added on to it. I drove around the neighborhood. Anything that I felt that was in this area took a picture of. This was one of them, and it was granted a foot side. So like seven-foot side yard, I'm sorry, seven-foot side yard variance. I also provided you, Mr. Chairman, with a survey that was on file with the town showing that side yard, and a CO was issued for that. On Climber Street, there was also a variance granted. Again, I didn't get, they didn't send a survey, but a variance was granted, and I took a picture. That's the yellow picture that shows a chimney and an addition on the side yard, and that looks rather close. It looks like it's.
Talk to us again about sixty-six. You said there was a variance for the house across the street?
Yes.
And the variance was for was for a single-story addition to the house?
Yes, and it's a it's number sixty-six, and it was a seven-foot side yard. It was granted on three nineteen eighty.
By this board?
Yes, by the board that was in place at the time.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm sure you weren't the applicant's representative back then either, right?
No, not back then.
All right. Was there anything further from the board on this application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application. I'd like to present the type-two.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.
Good night.
Case number forty-five, one fifty-four, Christian Avenue, LLC, twenty-one hundred Joshua Path Hop Hog. Properties located on the south side of Christian Avenue, seven hundred and thirty-three feet west of Valley Road, Stony Brook. Applicant requests permission for proposed nine hundred and thirty-two square foot first floor and eight hundred and thirteen square foot second floor in conjunction with proposed one-family dwelling on a fifty-foot lot. Eight hundred and twenty-four square foot one-story dwelling was demolished, but it was legally established under CEU number two seven three five two six.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Moje for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, I recuse.
I'm back.
Sorry about that. I for the record, Mr. Cunha has recused. Ms. Moje, I heard that you're back. Very good. You've been sworn. Your appearance for the record, please.
Diane Moje, D and I, Exbedding Services Offices located at seven seven nine Horse Blackwood in Farmingville. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is also a previous grant. The applicant, I I've only recently come into involvement with this property.
It does have it does have some history. Let me start with the planner's testimony, Christopher Reed. He's here. It will give us a little bit of background to the application.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Parcel was located on the south side of Christian Avenue, seven hundred and thirty-three feet west of Valley Road in the Hamlet of Stony Brook. Parcel was previously improved with a one-story dwelling, which has since been removed. And the applicant is intending to erect a two-story dwelling on the seven thousand four hundred square foot parcel with access intended via Christian Avenue. It is noted that the Board of Appeals heard an application to provide for a two-story dwelling in two thousand fourteen, which was approved, Le Calzy, case number twenty-seven of March twelfth, two thousand fourteen. And the board may wish to incorporate the minutes from this prior hearing. And the two thousand fourteen grant mandated that the dwelling size to be a maximum one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. The subject application provides for a one thousand seven hundred and forty-five square foot dwelling in accordance with the two thousand fourteen mandate. And while the parcel is nonconforming with regard to most bulk requirement of the B-one zoning due to the fact that there was a previously previous dwelling on the parcel, the zoning enforcement officer determined that the endeavor was exempt from said requirement. Should the board look favorably on the application, staff recommends standard residential mitigation as well as a covenant and or CO restriction prohibiting habitable space in the basement if same is being proposed, and the application is a type-two action.
Thank you. For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner. In addition to those comments, I will add, because the board is familiar with this parcel, that originally the application before the board in March of two thousand fourteen was for a home two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven square feet in size that would have maintained or was proposed to have maintained the original setback of the house, which at one location was one point two feet off of the side yard setback. That application was denied by the board, excuse me, by written decision dated May seventh, two thousand fourteen. Subsequent to that denial, the applicant returned and was the board was asked to reconsider a different app, a different application. And the board, in fact, granted that modified request with a maximum square footage of seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, as Mr. Reed has just indicated. So the board has history. I'm going to ask for a motion to incorporate the the two thousand fourteen proceedings in the into this record. Motion and second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So with that, Ms. Moje, what presentation would you like to give us?
I I actually, that was pretty much sums everything up. It's previous grant. There was a existing home located on the property that had a certificate of existing use. We're proposing to build and construct a residence in conformance with the two thousand fourteen grant. That's what the owners were working under the assumption of. Having gone back and forth and not being familiar with the process, it took quite a long time not realizing that the grant had run and there was a need to come back to, you know, to the board. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to try and address them at this time. We have no problem with any of the mitigation measures. And again, you know, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Diane. Could you just clarify for the board before I send it out, the what's the status of the parcel now? Was it was the the res, the original residence that was there with the one point two foot setback, was that removed? Is the foundation still there? What do we have on the parcel presently?
I I believe that the parcel is currently vacant. I don't believe that the house still exists.
All right.
There is an existing block garage, however. I believe that there is a detached garage that remains.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening, Diane. Are they taking down the block garage? Or are they keeping that?
No, they're going to keep that.
Okay, and and everything that we've incorporated from the minutes from two thousand fourteen is basically going to be staying all the same for this house also, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, and all the mitigation measures, everything, nothing will change on anything, correct?
No, not at all.
Okay, is there any neighbors, anybody?
We will have, I believe that we have a speaker on the application, Mr. Lindsay.
That's my, that's my next question. Can we hear them?
Okay, we certainly can.
Mr. Chairman, I have three speakers.
All right, then why don't we bring them all up now? We'll swear them all in.
I have a Peter Leseride. And Justin Adams. Mr. Adams might now want to speak, and or Roberta Fabiano.
All right. All three of you all need to to unmute yourselves and put your video on, please. Roberta, you seem like you're on your way. Peter Lescardis.
This is me here.
This man may not want to speak.
All right, then, I'm going to ask Roberta and Peter, please, to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
I'll tell the truth, the whole truth, none but truth.
So, oh, my God. Yes.
And Roberta?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good.
I'm I'm here also. My name is Frank Fountain. I'm an attorney, and I represent Roberta and another neighbor.
All right, so spell your last name for us, please.
F O U N T A I N.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. You were a speaker at the prior two thousand fourteen hearings, correct?
Correct.
I do recall. All right, Mr. Lescardis, what would you like to, first, let's start with your name and address, and then we'll take your comments.
Peter Lescarides, one fifty-two Christian Avenue, adjacent neighbor, moved in in just two years ago.
At one fifty-two or one fifty-six?
I live at one fifty-two.
All right, so the house is still the same size as when you purchased it?
Which house? The one fifty-four? My house? Yes.
Yours, okay. Very good. That we are familiar with it. We know the size, square footage of your house. This went through extensive hearings back in two thousand fourteen.
Okay, okay.
What comments did you have?
Well, I just wanted to read a statement. The current codes and standards preserve the reputation we value in Stony Brook. I believe maintaining the original codes is necessary, and I want to express my personal vote against the variance. And I believe that adherence to the agreed-upon plans, whatever they may be, following the this meeting should be ensured, preventing for any risk of noncompliance moving forward. So I just wanted to voice that simply put.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from board members? Roberta, I can't see your full name, so I don't, I'm unable to pronounce it. Why don't you give us your full name and address, please?
Yes, Roberta Fabiano at one five six Christian Avenue, Stony Brook, New York, one one seven nine zero.
All right, Roberta, you with your attorney, Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Which one of you would like to speak first?
Shall I say? All right, I'll say what.
Should you be sworn, Paul?
I believe yes. Roberta's been sworn. Her counsel is with her, and so there's no one else that I need sworn at this point.
Okay, are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay, okay, so I'm here today to continue to make clear that I and my neighbors completely oppose the building of this huge house on this tiny lot. It will harm our properties, and it will directly interfere with my use and enjoyment of my house, which is only four feet from my property line. I am also very concerned that the proposed house will be turned into another student rental house. Also, I'm concerned that the design, which we have not seen, would allow for more space on a third floor and for living space in the basement. It will be the largest house on the smallest lot in the area and will seriously damage our neighborhood. That's.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And you, do I take your address is one fifty-eight?
No, one fifty-six.
One fifty-six, I'm sorry, yes. You're immediately adjacent to the parcel.
Yeah. Which is, I just wondered, could I add, Mr. Chance, there is, it's been a hole in the ground there for a very long time. We've been living next to this for a very long time, and and it was excavated right up against my property line. And I've been very nervous about that. Well.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Fountain, did you wish to add on behalf of your clients?
Yes, I have several points to to add. First, I would, I would like to note that when Planner Reed said the square footage of the parcel, he said it was seventy-four hundred square feet. However, the record, the decision from May seventh of two thousand fourteen notes that the square footage for the parcel is five thousand square feet, not seventy-four hundred square feet. Second, I would like to note that the decision that was issued in two thousand and fourteen that allowed for the, you know, a a building of the size of seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, that was a the November eleventh, two thousand fourteen decision explicitly says that it's inclusive of an attached garage. And what appears to be going on in the current application is that Mr. Le Calzy is attempting to, in a word, have his cake and eat it, too. In other words, he's attempting to get seventeen hundred and forty-five square feet of habitable space plus an additional four hundred and some square feet of garage space, taking the total space back up to more than twenty-two hundred square feet, which was denied in the initial application. I would also like to draw the the board's attention to the decision that was issued on May seventh of two thousand fourteen. And we go through the findings of fact of that decision. There are, in in my view and in my client's views, no substantial or meaningful changes in what led to a denial of that application. For example, in the first finding of fact, it was noted that the pre-existing structure that has since been torn down was eight hundred and three square feet. And it was a one-story cottage, and that the the proposed structure is a two-story dwelling with now seventeen hundred and forty-five square feet. That's more than twice the square footage of the previous dwelling, and it dwarfs the square footage of the adjacent dwellings more than twice the size of the one at one fifty-six and a third, again, as large as the one at one fifty-two. I'd also note, as the board did in that November twenty fourteen decision, that the applicant's plan would intensify the existing limited setbacks in the original structure from all property lines by increasing the size and footprint of the structure. I'd like to note the second finding of fact in that previous decision. And in that finding of fact, it was noted that the lot in question maintains the smallest lot area and lot frontage in the applicable radius. In the third finding of fact in that previous decision, it was noted that the proposed dwelling was much larger than the surrounding dwellings and would require variances in many different ways. And as I've noted, the proposal this time is still more than twice what the previous dwelling was and is more than twice the size of the dwelling most adjacent to it and thirty percent or more larger than the dwelling on the other side. I would also note, as the third finding of fact notes, that the proposal would would bear no resemblance to the existing residential structures located on similar-sized lots in the neighborhood and would create precedent for significantly larger structures with limited setbacks. I would also note that the fourth finding of fact in the previous decision is essentially the same now as it was then. And I would would add that there's no indication in the current record that there has been any conclusions or comments received from the historic district advisory committee by the civic and community organizations relevant to this property as there was in the past. I would also note that, as in the fifth previous finding, that in addition to bearing no conformity to the addition to the existing neighborhood, the present proposal presents a substantial deviation from the requirements of the B-one residence district. There's significant deviance from total side yard requirements. There is significant deviance from rear yard setback requirements and a percentage of the lot area, if we have the fifty thousand, the five thousand square foot lot area, then the proposal would be thirty-four point nine percent of that area versus the twenty percent permitted by the current zoning regulations. And if we count the garage in in that area, then it takes the total area to two thousand two hundred and twenty-one square feet, which is forty-four point four percent of the square footage of the parcel, assuming that the parcel is fifty, is five thousand square feet as previously concluded. I would would also note that there are several other points that I would like to make regarding this. Next is that in the planning report from February twenty-second of this year, in addition to the ambiguity that exists with respect to the previous grant, which included an attached garage in the seventeen hundred and fifty square feet that was granted at that time, there there is no clarification of whether the seventeen hundred and forty-five square feet now includes the garage or doesn't include the garage. I would also note with respect to that planning report that in the final paragraph, there are matters that we're not sure. matters that we're not sure what they mean. In particular, in the first sentence, it says the zoning enforcement officer determined that the endeavor was exempt from said requirements. Or we don't know in what manner that came about, who made that decision, on what base that decision was made. And we also would like to get some clarification on what is meant by the next sentence, which refers to the standard residential mitigation and as well as to the covenants and restrictions prohibiting habitable space in the basement. We would note that in an a multiple listing service ad for the previous proposal, the applicant explicitly noted that there was a full basement that was being a full finished basement that was being included in that proposal, and we suspected that that action would likely continue. Oh, I would also like to note that I know this proposal, at least the survey that we have been provided by the board, contains what appears to be questionable numbers regarding the setback on the east side of the property, which is not noted in in the survey. There is a nine-foot setback that's noted on the west side of the property, but there's no setback noted on the east side of the property. I would also note that if one totals up the various measurements for the front side, that is, the north side of the property provided in the survey, that it shows a width of 26.5 feet. But if one adds up the total measurements for the back of the of the structure, it comes to 31.8 feet, but the but the visual depiction of the property shows that the the sizes are the same, that that they should be the same in the front as they are in the back. And and so it's unclear as to why there's a more than five-foot discrepancy between those two. And next, I would like to emphasize the history of noncompliance that this applicant has had with zoning regulations. And note that in the previous record, we introduced more than 50 pages obtained from the town about the the prior noncompliance issues that this applicant had had. I would also like to note that it has appeared in the past and may still be currently that the applicant has a substantial history of failure to pay taxes on time. And this application for a variance may be some attempt to try to buy time to make make payments of his taxes at a later time. I would next note that the there is a height concern that the the neighbors have, and that is that in the previous structure that was proposed, we were provided elevations both front, rear and both sides. And they created a potential for there to be a third story that was actually built and used while purporting to be an application for a second story. We've not been provided copies of the elevations of the plans for the proposed structure. And so we don't know whether, A, the proposal would satisfy the maximum height limitations of the of the existing ordinance or whether they would would provide the capacity to have a a third floor that would not be permitted under the regulations or under the variance. We would note in that regard that the applicant's current residence, which is some thousand feet away from the proposed dwelling, has what appears to be an unauthorized third floor as well. We would finally ask that make two requests that if that there be another hearing on this matter, at which neighbors who were unable to appear today could appear. Those neighbors include Cindy Williams, who resides in the property immediately behind 154 Christian and who appeared at the previous hearings and who has lived in the house where she lives now since she was a child and thus knows the the previous house quite well. In fact, she played in it as a child and she knows the history of the area. And she could shed light on that with members of the board. In addition, we would like to have the additional time to make sure that the historic district advisory committee has had an opportunity to opine. And we'll note that although this property is not in a deep historical district, it is in the transitional zone, at least a part of it is in the transitional zone. And that the historic district advisory committee provided an opinion on the previous application. We would also like to ensure that there is a comment from the Civic Association of Stockits and Stony Brook and from the Three Village Community Trust, as well as from the Stony Brook Concerned Homeowners Association. Finally, if there is going to be a grant of the variance, we would like for there to be some requirement that there be strict compliance inspections that are done to ensure that at no time the builder violates any of the provisions of the ordinances or or other building codes since he has has done so so often in the past. I stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. I will note for the record that both H D A C and the civics received copies of our agenda. Neither of those entities chose in this instance to provide any additional comment. I believe it's because this application was exhaustively vetted back in 2014. And there's a there's a standing, it was a standing decision in November of 2014 with very specific conditions to a grant. As indicated by the board's planner, this, after his review, this application appears to conform to that prior grant. I did hear some concerns of the neighbors concerning what could be a third floor or how they would use the basement. And the board addresses that in its decision and and will address it again in its decision when that when that decision is made. In terms of the square footage of the parcel, the you have the survey before you, the findings and conclusions adopted by the board at paragraph one was clearly inaccurate when it stated 5,000 square feet in parentheses at the fourth line. It is as our current planner's report indicates, just 7,400 square feet. So I'm not certain what it what what it is that you are seeing different from what was previously done. I do note for the record that no, there was no action taken challenging the board's decision in November of 2014. And unless you're unless you're here to tell me that there is a that there's been a change in the development of this area that that would that that would pertain to the board's decision, I'm not, we're not here to hear this all over again. So so talk to us about what's occurred since 2014 that would that would 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 affect the board's decision as it was rendered in November of 2014.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that anything has occurred since 2014.
Okay.
That has changed. However, I note that the November 11 of 2014 decision explicitly says that it's granted subject to the dwelling specifications for lots 50, 59 feet wide and except dwelling size to be maximum 1,750 square feet inclusive of attached garage.
So so that you understand when the board issues that condition in a decision, what it's saying is if you're going to have an attached garage, it's going to be included in the square footage. What you're saying is, in this instance, if they're not putting an attached garage to the house, then they are, then they're getting more square footage. In fact, they're not. According to that decision, and and if the board were to decide in a similar manner, we would place a limitation on the square footage of the structure, no matter how it's used, garage or no garage. So 1,750 square feet is 1,750 square feet.
Or a dwelling.
For the dwelling, yes.
And but if they were going to include an attached garage, then that 1,750 square feet would include the attached garage.
Yes, and that was the prerogative of the applicant as as a result of the board's decision back in 2014. And the board could very well make the same condition in this decision that follows this hearing. It doesn't, there, I I see the argument that you're making that they potentially could have more house this way. The maximum limitation was always there, whether they choose to add a garage, attach a garage to the house or not. It's the same square footage of the house. So when you pass it, it's the same footprint.
All right. And we still have the concerns about the setbacks. And and the setbacks of the of the current proposal are different from the setback from the prior proposal. And we would ask you therefore for you to take a very careful look at whether those are appropriate setbacks.
I I I'm in complete agreement with you. You understand that when we saw this original proposal with the house on the existing foundation at 1.2 feet, 1.2 foot setback, this board was concerned, the neighborhood was concerned, and we appreciate the fact that everyone came out to speak on this application. We recall that this is one of only two 50-foot lots in this in this radius. It is the smallest developed lot in the radius. And we were we were concerned about the size of the dwelling when we issued this our decision in November of 2014. I'm, that's why I'm, because this conforms to that decision, I'm wanting, I'm suggesting to you that if there's been development that 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 pertains to that decision of the board since that decision, I'd be happy to hear you on that. But apart from that, this board has previously deliberated and issued a decision on on this parcel with 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 what I can see, no change since that decision occurred or was rendered, apart from the fact that there's been a time lapse.
And it's, Mr. Chairman, we would we would still request that there be a a continuance of the hearing for a reasonable period of time to allow us to have the other neighbors who have been unable to appear today to have an opportunity to do so as well as to allow time, you know, to consult with the Stony Brook Concerned Homeowners and the Three Village Community Trust. The two organizations that you did not mention had been notified of this proposal and had not rendered an opinion, yeah.
We do have the incorporated record from the prior hearings. We do are familiar with what they've indicated previously to us, both as a result of the March and the November actions of the board. I will permit a a post-hearing comment period, and I think that should accommodate that that concern.
And so you're going to deny the opportunity for the backdoor neighbor to appear in person to let her thoughts be known?
It's an interesting way that you phrase the question, sir. I believe that this is the date of the public hearing. It was duly noticed. We received no request from any person to to stating that they were unable to 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 speak to us. As you're aware, we're always here and available to accept email comments. And we are here tonight and will be here for eight or 10 hours with public hearings waiting to hear what concerned citizens have to say about applications. We aren't deny, this board does not deny anyone an opportunity to speak. You're talking about, if you're talking about convenience, we will do what I can. I've indicated to you that we would have taken written comments at any time before the hearing, and I will continue to allow written comments after the hearing. So I disagree with you when you when you phrase a question suggesting that we would deny someone the opportunity to speak. Is there anything else?
I understand, Mr. Chairman, but but Cindy Williams, who is the backdoor neighbor, is currently in the hospital. She has recently had three surgeries. She's scheduled to be released from the hospital tomorrow. And therefore, I think she ought to have an opportunity, if she would like to do that, you know, to make her case to you in person, you know, via the this Zoom conference.
I agree that she should have an opportunity to present this board with her comment. The manner in which we accept the comment will be decided by the board. Thank you very much, sir. Is there, Mr. Vega, do we have any other speakers?
Mr. Chair, I have one other speaker. I have a John Divinity.
Sir, I do see that you've been promoted. You have your video on. I don't, I don't hear audio yet, and it looks like you've resolved that. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can. And I believe that you may have been at the 2014 proceedings here also. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes.
Let me ask you to to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Raise your right hand. So I swear to the truth, the whole truth, not but truth.
Yes.
And your name and address, sir?
John Divinity, 155 Christian Avenue.
All right. I I just want to state before we continue, this board has a very clear recollection of the prior proceedings before it. We know that this applicant does not it's it's hard to, it's hard to put it, we we know that he wasn't the favorite person on the block, and we know that there were some issues with his with his residence that has use of his residence that has that has caused issues within the neighborhood. We are familiar with all of that. We see, we understand the board's concerns. Mr. Divinity, what did, what would you like to add today?
I just wanted to just have one clarification. You were sort of heading in that direction, and I understand, I look out over a dirt pile. So I understand that moving this forward i- is worthwhile from as long as it's within reason, okay? But one of the issues that I do recall with respect to the total square footage is is that I seem to recall it was an overall issue of how much how much of all of the buildings on the lot that can be actually built. And when you granted the 1,700, it was envisioned that you would not, the the garage in the back was coming down because it's it's not really, it's a shell right now. It's not really a garage. So that when the applicant says to you, I'm taking down the detached garage and I'm going to potentially include a garage that is going to be attached, that taking down the attached garage cuts down on the overall amount of buildings on a otherwise smaller lot. So when Frank makes the point that 1,700 is 1,700, if you're gonna now go back and keep the detached garage, which is which is a shell, you'd have to rebuild that entire garage, he is in effect getting more square footage. It's not quite as simple as the one dwelling because I believe when you issued the first determination, the second dwelling was not going to be, the second building on the property was not going to be there.
The garage was to be demolished? Okay, what?
And I'm not certain, but but that's part of the file. And I think that that has to be reviewed in terms of whether or not the new application is envisioning a larger building space and is also tacking on what was originally represented to be destroyed, because it's pretty much destroyed right now.
I would agree.
That's my only clarification I would like to make.
Agree with you, sir. I would agree. And we've incorporated their records. So what we will do is we will review the transcript of that hearing to 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 determine whether or not the proposal was to remove that detached garage. Absolutely.
That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, the record should also reflect that we have written comments received through the online submittal process from John Berkowitz, who gives us an address of 1154 Christian Avenue, Stony Brook. And his comment is this multi-unit home rental business corporation is is compromising the safety, integrity, and peace in our quiet town. Please enforce all codes and laws to the strictest degree possible. So we've made that part of the record. We do have note notice of the existing violations, all of which appear to be closed. But we will certainly consider them when issuing a final determination on this. Are there any other speakers on the application?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other speakers.
Is there any further comment from the board? If there's not, that's for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to close and hold.
Motion is to close and hold. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mojai, I did not. Forgive me, forgive me. You're still with us. Do you have any final comment for the board?
Yes, I do, actually.
Thank you.
To reiterate that this structure, the detached garage, is part of a certificate of existing use number 273526 and is in fact a legal structure located on the property and is not included in the square footage of the proposed home. The request before the board has already been granted and the applicants have moved forward with other approvals, i.e. planning, health department, plan review, okay? And got caught up in a timeframe and of course. Okay, and got caught up in a timeframe and of course, um, you know, delays considered with COVID, although the application was already expired at that point, which they had not realized. So the grant was is identical to what was previously, actually, it's exactly that was previously approved, which in fact included the existing detached garage. As far as a third story is concerned, that's not permitted. We would not get through the plan review process because in state code, you're not permitted to have a third story. You have already indicated that you would be covenanted in the basement to not be habitable space and part of the regulations of the Town of Brookhaven do in fact regulate that. I am not in agreement with prolonging this hearing as it has been previously granted. The applicant has substantially obtained their approvals in order to obtain a building permit and to go forward with the building permit and constructing this residence. The fact that it previously had a certificate of existing use by the town code has entitled it its permission to be rebuilt on the property. And again, it was previously granted and previously vetted. I think any prolonging is just going over and over stuff that has been already worked out.
Thank you, Ms. Moji. Uh, under the circumstances, though, I do recognize the fact that the individual who is adjoining in terms of property ownership has just recently got out of the hospital. And in all fairness, I think that she's entitled to say some to give us whatever her comments are. So I I do have a motion by Mr. Lindsay to close, and that would be close subject to a 20 day written comment period that will expire in March 16, 2021. So it's the board of the application and the motion is to close the application subject to a 20 day written comment period. No future appearances, no future public hearing. The as the matter is closed, and once the March 16th day ends, the board will take the application to for decision. So that motion I'll take by Mr. Lindsay, I'll second it all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you. So for all of you that are still with us that spoke on the application, 20 day common period, March 16th, please forward your comments to the board. We can we will accept them in any way that they come by email. My mail correspondence into personal delivery to the to Town Hall to be dropped off in the in the designated area in the lobby for the Board of Appeals. Thank you for all coming out. That would conclude the 4:00 PM interval calendar. We do have several matters on the whole of our calendar. If it's acceptable to the board, we can go directly into them.
So.
All right, then.
Case number five of January 13, 2021, Bettina Warner, care of Andrew Malguanera. Property is located on the east side of Middle Island Boulevard, 75 feet south of Cedar Grove Terrace, Middle Island. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing cellar entrance exceeding the five foot permitted encroachment.
It's a charity Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Malguanera. You've been sworn. Can we have your appearance, please?
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. I understand that this matter was heard by the board on January 13th and was held for an inspection. I believe that inspection has occurred, and Ms. Recordy will read the report.
Got to give me a second. I have to.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, on this is from Anthony Bremner, Senior Building Inspector. On January 29, the inspector inspected the subject premises. President at the inspection was Bettina Warner, owner. The scope of the inspection included the entire dwelling for any violations, including a dog training slash boarding business located on the subject premises. The building inspector, while inspecting the interior of the dwelling, observed that the garage and basement had been converted to living space and did not observe any evidence of a dog training boarding business on the premises. The undersigned inspector also observed that four dogs were present inside the house. Bettina Warner stated that she was the owner of the dogs and that she does have a dog training business, but conducts business away from her home.
It sounds like it's some children bedtime in the Malguanera residence. All right, for the record, for the record, those are the comments of the from the inspection. Did you want to add anything further?
I'm okay. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything further from the board? All right, then. Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus. Seconded by Mr. Wisdom O in favor. Any opposed to record should reflect that Chair abstains, motion carries six in favor with one abstention.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good.
All right. Okay, um, case numbers three through six of January 27, 2021. Campo Brothers, 907 Main Street, Port Jefferson, located on the west side of Brookfield Avenue, 252 feet south of Bellingham Drive, Center of Riches. Applicant request division of a parcel into four plots, 1, 2, 3, and 4, requiring lot frontage variance for a proposed one family dwelling on Lot 1. Lot frontage variances on lots 2, 3, and 4 for a proposed one family dwelling on each of those lots.
Mr. Chair, I have Mr. Michael Strauss for the applicant. I also have a speaker on this case.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening, Mrs. Strauss. How are you today?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Can we have your appearance for the record, please?
Nino Michael Strauss, 907 Main Street, Port Jefferson, for the applicant who's under contract to purchase the property.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. I will note for the record that this matter was originally heard by the board of the Four Lot Land Division on January 27, 2021. During the public hearing, the discussion was held and and the matter was held to today. Since that time, we have received an alternate application with revised plans for a three lot land division identical to the one previously granted by the board and on the adjacent parcel. So before you say anything about it, I would like to thank you for talking with the client and for bringing us a better conforming plan to the board. We appreciate your efforts in that regard. So with regard to this, we do have brief comments on the board's planner. I'd like them. I'd like him to testify now.
Following is a supplemental staff report for the above referenced application, which was heard on January 27, 2021, and was held open by the board for the applicant to submit a revised land division plan, which now proposes three lots instead of four. And the proposed endeavor conforms to the board action approving a three lot land division depicted as lots 27, 28, and 46 in the name of Procopio. Case number nine through 11 of May 30, 2007, which is the same size and configuration as the subject parcel. Further, it is noted that the revised plan increased the lot frontage for the two flag lots from 15 feet to 20 and 25 feet.
And those are just the just the limited comments on the revised plan. Mr. Strauss, did you have anything final for the board?
Just that, as Mr. Reed stated, it's identical to the parcel that this board approved for three lots, just two parcels away. And of course, therefore, we believe it conforms with the area and is a reasonable way to develop the property.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion? Wait, wait, I'm sorry. So 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 from a technical standpoint, Mr. Strauss, have we amended the application? You've submitted revised plans?
I submit it in writing, but I certainly can request formally to amend the application to three lots.
As per the revised survey? All right. So the motion is to amend the the application as per the revised survey showing us the three lot plan. Does the board have that motion? Motion second have been made all in favor. Opposed motion carries. Then on the amended application, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to grant the application as per revised survey depicting three lots.
Second.
All right. So unlisted action type two with all mitigation measures of the BCA planner. Motion is by Mr. Cunha, and I believe I heard Mr. Berksen seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a speaker.
On this application?
Yes.
All right. Why don't we? I'm going to ask the board just for a motion to open this hearing up again. Motion and second have been made all in favor. Any opposed motion carries? We have an open application. We have a speaker.
Mr. Chair, I have a Jamie Ruby.
I see. Why? I do see that they appear to be coming up Jamie Sir Ruby. If you could just put your video on, I think that we'll we should be able to see you. Everything's shifted, but I don't see I don't see the box anymore.
Mr. Chair, I believe she has left us.
Okay. All right, then. We had. Is there a motion then to? What are we doing? We have it open. So is there a motion? Is there a motion to to grant the application as per the prior motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. I believe there's just one more matter on the calendar.
Case number seven through 10 of January 27, 2021, Dominic Roselli, Melora Estates, Roselli and Sons, Dink, 86 Mark Drive Ridge, located on the north side of Waldorf Drive, 142 feet west of Puritan Drive Shirley. Applicant request division of a parcel into four plots, 1, 2, 3, and 4, requiring lot area lot frontage and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one family dwelling on plot 1. Lot area lot frontage, both streets, front yard setback from both streets, and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one family dwelling on lot 2. Lot area lot frontage, front yard setback, and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one family dwelling on lot 3. Lot area lot frontage, front yard setback, and minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one family dwelling on lot 4.
All right, Mr. Mr. Strauss, your appearance for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Michael Strauss, 907 Main Street, Port Jefferson, representing the applicant who is under contract to purchase the property.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Again, this the record should reflect that this matter was was initially heard by the board of the Four Lot Land Division on January 27, 2021, as cases seven through 10. The matter was also held for reconsideration of the proposal, and since the hearing, Mr. Strauss, again, you've submitted a revised survey for a three lot land division with with a with a letter concerning the applicant's proposal. We've made those part of the record. I would like your consent to amend the application for a three lot and division as per your revised survey.
You have my consent, Mr. Chair.
Does the board have that motion?
So moved.
And we have further comment for the board's planner on this application. We'll take that first.
Following is a supplemental staff report for the above referenced action application, which was heard on January 27, 2021, and was held open by the Board of Appeals for the applicant to submit a revised land division plan, which now proposes three lots instead of four. In addition, the applicant also intends to provide a trade parcel with the endeavor, and staff recommends that this not be considered as mitigation and instead render a decision in accordance with Section 267 of New York State Town Law on the revised three lot land division plan. Staff notes the area conformance remain the same at 17%. The frontage conformance increased from 23% to 72%. And the proposed endeavor reduces the quantity of variances from 21 to 17 and reduces the area relaxations from 58% for one parcel and 73% for the three additional from 44%, 63% and 71% with the current proposal. Staff notes the Board of Appeals granted a three lot land division known as Seaside Properties. Case numbers 9 to 12 through 12 of July 26, 2017, and partially depicted as Lot 69 and the two lots north of Seame, and the approval provided for lots enjoying 21,780 square feet of area and 100 feet of frontage.
All right, then, Mr. Strauss, did you have any final comment for the board on this application?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So we've amended it to three lots, and I think the key here is that under the new configuration, we have over 70% conformity with respect to frontage. And I think frontage is by far and away the most important characteristic in determining whether a lot conforms to the area, because that is the appearance that the lot will have from the street. Certainly, one of the proposed lots completely conforms in in terms of lot area. The second largest is closer. And then but the percentages overall, because they're not quite as big as the majority in the area, give it the reduced conformity that Mr. Reed refers to. If you take a look at the radius map, it's almost identical to the three lots across to the southeast of the parcel, known as lots 11, 2, and 19 on the radius map, because it is unique that it's a corner lot, and it would confirm conform identically with how those were developed. But what my client has offered here is he heard the board's comments and the board's inclination to approve two lots in this area. So what he did is he has proposed a trade parcel, a 50-foot buildable lot in Shirley, which is known as 0205, Section 586, Block 3, and Lot 41 as a trade parcel. It's a 50 by 217 foot single and separate lot. It is next door to one that's been granted by the board and has a permit, and it's across the street from another 50-foot lot that was approved. So it would be a buildable lot. And it's also in Shirley, and we think it would be very good planning to avoid that 50-foot lot being built and instead build a third lot here, which would be a much more sensible development and would avoid a smaller lot being built, which we know the board likes to limit the number of 50-foot lots that they think really has to be built throughout the town. So he's recognizing the board's inclination of two lots and taking an overall development of three lots and putting it here instead of two lots here and one lot in another place. Additionally, we think there it is a reasonable application for three lots on its own, and we think offering that trade parcel is an extremely beneficial way to develop this parcel and is very good and sound planning with respect to how the Town of Brookhaven would like to see its parcels developed in an overall fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. The application certainly has some weakness, and we 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 had a public hearing previously. I don't need to go into it all again. But the application, even at a three lot, doesn't compare with prior board action in the area. It compares possibly favorably to those lots that were built prior to the inception of the code or prior to the present zoning classification, and that's what the issue is that we're dealing with. While the lot frontage can the lot frontage conformity is, as you've indicated, the lot areas, I recall, is something, I don't have it in front of me, something close to 14% which I understand you see, you recognize that that's a concern, and as a result, took the step of actually offering this to TDR. So this is, um, an application that the board will need to, to deliberate on. And I appreciate you putting forth, um, the proposal that you have.
My, my client would also like to please, uh, appeal to the board that if the board feels that this is a problem and would ever want to act negatively on it, we would appreciate if the board would instead hold it further so we could address it even further. Because the applicant does want to find a way to work this out in a reasonable fashion.
Is this, I mean, it, as, as it, as it is proposed now, your client has has titled two or 50-foot lot that can be built on and certainly can build two here, so there would be three total. Why, why you want them in this one location is, is nothing, is something that you've not, um, fully explained to us.
I, I think part of it is that you're building lots, even the two smaller lots here are 100 by roughly, uh, 117 feet or 125 by 117 feet, that these are more reasonable, uh, desirable lots to, uh, construct than on a 50-foot lot, which is a much, you know, smaller lot of smaller house.
As I remember, the TDR is 217 feet deep, and that's not, that's quite, that's quite a large area. The, again, the issue with this application is there's one, there's one board action in this area that we, that we certainly have to, um, look at and be consistent with, and that's a July 2017 action, wherein we created, uh, lots enjoying 21,000 square feet of area and 100 foot of frontage.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. I'll also tell you that this is a fully developed area. You're not creating a precedent. It's also completely, even if you were, it can be completely differentiated because no one else is offering a trade parcel, and we really think that it's beneficial to the towns to have a third lot developed here rather than two here in a 50-foot lot. But if the board really.
I did hear, I did hear what you had to say. So my question to you is, would you, do you, would you like us to keep this open? Or would, do you want me to close the application?
I, I'd like you to close it, but what I will tell you is if, if the board, uh, if the, because I prefer the board to deliberate decision. But if the board, uh, doesn't think that they can come to a positive decision, I don't know if there's any mechanism for putting it over, so it could even, I mean, the applicant prefer without the trade to amend it to two rather than have the application denied. I mean.
I, I, I do, I do, I do hear what you're, what you're saying. So I, I'm going to, as a result, just ask the board for a motion to close, um, on the application. Motion is by Mr. Wisdom.
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Strauss, always good to see you. We will take everything that you've submitted to us under consideration.
Thank you very much. Everyone be well and have a good night.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion for a recess, uh, for executive session.
So moved.
May second it all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. I believe that we can go right into it. Thank you. Honors, there are a motion to resume the hearing.
So.
Motion and second have been made all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board members. Turning to today's worksheet, page number four. Case number 12 in the name of William Stoner in Paulette, Orlando. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted special permit to one year unlisted action with all mitigation measures. Second. I do.
That motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor.
I am.
Any opposed? Motion carries to page 19. Under request for grant extension, case number 26 of February 27, 2019, in the name of Jay Goodman. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Prior grant of 313, 2019 is extended for a period of six months to expire 913, 2021.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the same page, case 24 of October 3, 2018, in the name of Jeffrey and Paula Rowdy. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Prior grant of 10-3, 2018 is extended to expire 515, 2021.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page 20. Under extension of time to file covenants, case four, four, eight, and five of August 21, 2019, in the name of Peter and Aaron Del Bianco. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the time to file the covenant is extended three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha. Taken by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under modification of motion, case 14B of January 24, 2018, in the name of Margaret McGregor. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Prior grant, uh, 124, 2018 is modified to reflect approval for 53.4 feet total side yard and 38.1 feet rear yard. The remaining conditions as originally approved.
Mr. Burksen will be seconding.
I am seconding you.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Recused.
Opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's recused. Motion carries six in favor with one recusal. Finally, board members to page 23, case 22 of February 20, February 10, 2021, in the name of Martin and Francine Solboman. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the grant as presented type two.
By Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, six in favor with one abstention by Mr. Mazarella. Finally, board members, case 32 of February 10, 2021, in the name of Susan and Albert Goodheart, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the grant as presented type two.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Record will reflect that Mr. Mazarella abstains. A motion carries six in favor with one abstention. Does the board have a motion to adjourn?
No.
I see you all. Take care.
Take care.